To order, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Schweitzer. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Con. Alderman Orion. Alderman Ballmer. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Songier. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldrich. Alderwoman Songier. Alderwoman Spencer. Fourteen present, you have Quorm.
A Quorm being present, we will be led in a reflection by Lisa Thorpe.
Hello. My name is Lisa Thorpe, and I'm a librarian and a longtime city resident, now in the new Seventh Ward. I'm delighted to be here because you all are at the crossroads of many things that delight me: democracy, our incredibly beautiful, deeply flawed city, and its people, and the belief that people can come together and make the world a better place. One thing that does not delight me is the banning of books and restricting people's access to information. When I started at Central Library several years ago, I would participate in the annual banned book week with book displays and lists, but it was always with a bit of a wink. Isn't it quaint that these things used to happen? Fast forward to today, when books and libraries are once again under attack, often as part of the culture war against our LGBTQIA+ friends, families, and neighbor. In Missouri last year, the legislature passed laws significantly restricting public school libraries, and next month, the rule from our Secretary of State entitled "Library Certification Requirements for the Protection of Minors" will go into effect, imposing similar restrictions on public libraries. The budget submitted by the Missouri House this year would defund public libraries altogether, although word is the Senate would add that money back. I was invited to reflect on banned books, and I settled on one of my favorites: Maya Angelou's memoir, I Know Why the Cage Word Sings, published in 1969. Angelou was born Marguerite Annie Johnson in St. Louis on April 4, 1928. She would have turned 95 on the recent election day when all of you elders were voted into office. The book details the poet's early years, including her time in St. Louis, and illustrates the power of literature and libraries in surviving trauma and adversity. According to the ALA's Office on International Freedom, the book was at the number-three spot in the list of 100 most frequently-challenged books from 1990 to 1999, and has been on the top 10 most-challenged book list four times in this century. Objections include claims that the work, quote, "preaches bitterness and hatred toward white people" and encourages deviant behavior because of references to lesbianism, premarital sex, and profanity. I will now read a brief excerpt from Chapter 11 of that lovely book, and I invite you all to visit your public library and to read whatever book grabs your fancy. "I read more than ever, and I wished my soul I had been born a boy. Horatio Alger was the greatest writer in the world. His heroes were always good, always won, and were always boys. I could have developed the first two virtues, but becoming a boy was sure to be difficult, if not impossible. When spring came to St. Louis, I took out my first library card, and since Bailey and I seem to be growing apart, I spent most of my Saturdays at the library, no interruptions, breathing in the world of penniless, shoe-shined boys who, with goodness and perseverance, became rich, rich men and gave baskets of goodies to the poor on holidays. The little princesses, who were mistaken for maids, and the long-lost children mistaken for waifs, became more real to me than our house, our mother, our school, or Mr. Freeman." Thank you so much for having me here today, and thank you in advance for all your hard work on behalf of our city. I'll see you at the library.
We will dispense with line item three. Introduction of honored guests. We are going to go through in numerical order today, and if you not only want to introduce your guest, but take a couple of minutes to say your piece about coming into this new Board of Fourteen. So Alderwoman from the First.
Thank you so much, Madam President, and members of the new Board of Fourteen Alderpeople. I am so honored to be here today, and first and foremost, I'd like to introduce my parents, Jane and Gordon Schweitzer, as my honored guests today. My parents and family inspired me to serve. My dad was a judge in the municipal courts, and my mom was a circuit clerk. They are why I'm here, and I could not have done this without them. Thank you. To my other honored guest, Jimmy Quinn, my husband of just a few months. We haven't had a honeymoon yet, so hopefully we get that done now that the campaign's over. I fondly refer to Jimmy as constituent number one, as he is both my first priority and the squeakiest wheel when it comes to getting trash picked up, potholes filled, and basic city services delivered. So thank you, Jimmy, for being here. I also wouldn't be here today without the support of so many people. I'd like to thank them from the People of Local 73, SEIU, Sierra Club, Action St. Louis, Moms Demand Action, the Building Trades, the Labor Council. Let's keep going. What else do I miss? Sierra Club, AFT 420. Thank you all so much for your support. Thank you to my volunteers, campaign donors. Thank you to one of my favorite constituents and our Madam Assistant Clerk, Sharita Rogers. First ward, resident, very proud. And of course, thank you to Alderman Fred Wessels, Greg Daley, Mayor Slay, some of the people who've mentored me throughout my career, and to my former, now coworker, Richard Calo, for your guidance and support over the last decade. It's going to be weird not working at Public Eye anymore, but I'm excited to focus on this role. Last but not least, the constituents of Ward One. I wouldn't be here without your support, and just being able to serve you is the greatest honor. I'm very aware that that seat that I sit in is not mine, it is yours, and I only fill it because you put me here. So thank you so much. It is my honor to serve you. I will finish by saying thank you to President Green. You did more to make this happen in just a few months than people did in nine, 10 years. So I think you should be incredibly proud of yourself. I know I'm very proud of you. Thank you so much for your support and friendship.
Alderman from the Second.
Thank you, Madam President of the Board. I have no special guests with me today. My wife and family are working and in school. My mom is tutoring, but they are with me here in spirit, as is my father, who died two years ago, and it'd be great to have him here. I know he enjoyed the campaign victory he had, and he's certainly watching down on me today. I'm going to start off with just a bit of advice for the newly-elected aldermen. Take a deep breath and take time today to recognize every single person that helped you. Get newly-elected today. We have plenty of time. Please do that. We all want to hear from you and all those folks who helped you. I just thank my family, so my advice here is, as you all know, running campaigns and being in public office, you can get some dust thrown on you, and it's important to remember the people who are always going to have your back, stand up, and support you, and that is your family and your very close friends. I want to also thank the President for her leadership during the transition of a Twenty-Eight to Fourteen. You and your office, I know, work very, very hard on making this historic moment come to fruition. So thank you, Madam President. Let's enjoy this new session, everyone.
Alderman from the Third.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you to everyone for being here to witness such a historic milestone in the history of our city. It is indeed my pleasure to be here with the new Board of Fourteen. Having served previously as the alderman for the Twenty-Fifth Ward for fourteen years, it is a great honor to represent my neighbors and the new Third Ward down here at City Hall. I know I ran unopposed, but I frequently get asked how I've been able to do that so many times, and I jokingly paraphrase the wonderful Ms. Dolly Parton, that it takes a lot of work to look this good. And that work would not be possible without my neighbors, without my family, my friends, and everyone who contributes to my life, my success, and my being here in public office. I have a few folks that I would like to mention. I know I've been down here for, you know, several years now, but... Sorry, I'm getting a little touched. My boyfriend Darren is here as my honored guest this morning. He puts up with a lot, but it is great to have someone there with you through the ups and downs, and I am so thankful to have him by my side. I have with me one of my neighbors, who is also the co-EMC for today's festivities and the rotunda, Ms. Akasha Royale. Proud Third Ward resident and the newly-crowned Miss Gay Missouri. And I came down to this body fourteen years ago as the first openly LGBT elected in the history of the city. And now, more than ever, it is important to have these voices present on this floor, in this chamber, in Jefferson City, having these conversations. And Akasha, you have done such an amazing job, and I am so proud of you. I know I tell you that every time I see you. But I have to say, she has been down in Jefferson City, filling the halls of our General Assembly with love and grace and understanding, grit and determination, and it will get us there. And I am so proud of all of the work. Our drag queens are under attack, our trans youth are under attack, and it is imperative that this city surrounds them with the love that they need to be healthy, happy, and grow in life. And I am here not only as, you know, alderman of the Third Ward, but as a proud, openly gay man, and I am so happy that my constituents have instilled their trust and faith in me to be here on their behalf. You know, even though I ran unopposed, I still ran a campaign. I'm not going to take my voters for granted. I'm not going to take my neighbors for granted. And I wouldn't have been able to do that without, you know, certainly the help of my friends and neighbors, but also organizations like the Labor Council, numerous union organizations, probably too many to name right now, Sierra Club, Missouri Pro Choice. Women are under attack in Missouri and across this country, and it is important that we say publicly that women have the right to do with their body whatever they choose to do with their body. I was proudly endorsed by Missouri Pro Choice. I have stood on this floor for many years. I've been down in Jefferson City, you know, spreading that word as well, and I am happy to continue that work here down at the Board of Aldermen. I want to have an honorable mention to all of the staff here at the Board of Aldermen. I know the last several weeks have been a lot of work, and that work has not gone unnoticed, so thank you to all of you. And last but not least, I want to thank our ancestors. And I know many of us have lost our family members over the years, and it's hard sometimes in these milestones to not have them with us. And just take love and comfort in their presence today and every day. Thank you again so much. I appreciate it.
Alderman from the Fourth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the new Board of Fourteen. It's a privilege to be standing here today, and I learned from my last inauguration and made a list this time of some folks that I need to thank, because as my colleague from the Second Ward pointed out, this is the time to make sure that everyone who's helped you out gets heard. Take your time while you're doing this. You don't want to get home later and hear from, you know, your mom or whatever, that you left her out. So speaking of that, I'd like to thank my mom, who's up in the balcony, and my sister as well. You know, the rest of my family couldn't be here today, but, you know, through all the craziness in campaigning and just politics in general, it's important to be able to have that backbone of your family, who you know is always going to be there supporting you. I also want to thank all my friends, you know, sticking through anything, sticking by anyone through a campaign and knowing the craziness that's going to happen, and, you know, not always being able to be there for your friends during tough times in their life. It's hard, but, you know, good friends stand by you through all of that, and so I want to make sure I thank my friends. I'd also like to thank my girlfriend Katrina. She... It takes a special person to want to hang around a politician in the best of times, but a campaign in the middle of the winter is not the best of times, and she was out there knocking doors, winning the minds and hearts of the people of St. Louis on my behalf, so I certainly thank her for that. I also want to thank my campaign team. They did an incredible job. I'd like to thank everyone who volunteered on the campaign, whether you canvass, phone bank, text bank, just talk to your neighbors. You know, having the discourse surrounding all these issues is incredibly important, and it takes a community to do that. I'd also like to thank the neighborhood associations, both in the Twenty-Fourth Ward and the new Fourth Ward. They have organized candidate forums. They organize regular meetings. These are the places where we all get together as a community and discuss the issues of the day, and that's what allows all of us to come in here and best represent our people. I'd also like to thank the Fourth Ward Democrats and St. Louis Young Democrats for doing the same, for being a place to get together and discuss these issues. I'd like to thank every organization that endorsed me in the race. I could rattle them off, but in the interest of time, I will not. They all know who they are. Thank them. I also want to thank the men and women of Organized Labor. Labor is having a resurgence at the moment, and, you know, from the beginning of me getting involved here politically, Organized Labor has been with me every step along the way, and I've been trying to support them every step along the way. And as I proceed through these next four years, they've always had my back, and I intend to have their back. I'd also like to thank my NISs over the last four years, Karen Clifford and Brian Coldy. It's an impossible task, even under ideal conditions, to deal with every pothole, every stop sign, every, you know, street light out, but both Karen Clifford and Brian Coldy have been amazing at really helping me out with all of that. I'd like to also thank all of the residents of the new Fourth Ward. Whether you voted for me or not, I'm committed to serving you and representing you here. We may not always agree, but I'll always be looking to build bridges and make the Ward the best place in the world to live. And it was the honor of a lifetime to keep the seat warm for the people of the Twenty-Fourth Ward. Yesterday, we turned out the light on the Twenty-Fourth Ward. It no longer exists. This may be the last time anyone talks about the Twenty-Fourth Ward on this floor. But it's, again, the honor of a lifetime to keep the seat warm for the people of the Fourth Ward, and I'll be keeping the seat warm for the next four years. And it's the people's seat, and it's an honor to sit in it. Thank you all.
Alderman from the Fifth.
All right, who do I talk to to get my old desk back? I don't like being up this front. Twenty years I've been back there hiding out behind the camera, and you guys put me up here today. I don't know. Twenty years ago, I got inaugurated, and there is no one here that was here that day. I am the only alderman left from 2003. Our clerk, Mr. Kennedy, was here, but he's hiding out back in the back now because he knows it's safer back there. But I have no guests with me. My lovely bride of 34 years, Suzie, had to take her 95-year-old mother to lunch because she needs her vodka with some iced tea in it. That's how she stayed to be 95. But I'd like to thank everyone, the police, the fire departments, all the labor unions. Thank you very much for all your help during this race. It's been a long time. I'm getting too old to walk down those steps or knocking on doors. I might have to hire some young kids and wheel me up these steps next election. But appreciate all the time and help. And to all you new aldermen, just remember this: Enjoy today. This is the most popular you'll ever be. You have not made a decision yet. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the Sixth.
Well, good morning, good afternoon. I did take some of your advice, and I did make a list, but very excited to be here. First, I want to say thank you to my mom and dad, Luis and Hilda Velazquez. I know through the years, I've asked many school projects, many campaigns, which turn into campaign things, but they've been here, obviously, for me and supported me all the way, even when they didn't quite understand what I was doing, but they wanted, they loved me anyway. Thank you to my brother, retired Army captain.
Yeah, I think your mic is out. Try it.
Can you hear me? Well, this is going to be fun. Good morning. I'm glad to be here. I wanted to acknowledge my honored guests. What I did say before is that I did take some initial alderman advice, and I did make a list. So I wanted to thank my parents, first of all, Luis and Hilda Velazquez, who have supported me through the years, from school projects to campaigns, so I'm sure anything else. They may have not understood what I wanted to do, but they've always been here. Wanted to acknowledge my brother, who drove all the way in from Clarksville, Tennessee, last night to be here, retired U.S. Army Captain Luis Velazquez Jr., always supported me in his own way and been the big brother when I needed it, when I didn't think I needed it. As well as my sister-in-law Janet and my three nieces, Brianna, Alexia, and Rose, who couldn't make it today. Want to thank my partner Byron, who has, like many of you with partners, weathered a... All that comes with campaigns. We actually got caught in the Southwest debacle, so in between the campaign, we had a 20-hour road trip from Minneapolis to DC. So he is definitely a keeper, and thank you for all your support. Also wanted to thank my sister, who's been a counselor and strategist, Venus, and my brother-in-law Jim. They couldn't make it today because they're in Seattle, but I couldn't have done this without them. And I wanted to acknowledge the friends that encouraged me to run, and I'm going to name some names because this is the time to do it. My friend, Hilberta Pinella, my friends Diego and Betsy Abente, Gabriela Ramirez-Ariano, and Iya Chinaka. They pushed me to run when I wasn't sure I wanted to do it. The campaign team that made it possible, Bree Bowen and Marion Owens. My all-star volunteer, Dan Pearson, who didn't know me but knocked doors for me almost every weekend in that cold winter, and he kept at it. I have volunteers like Tim and Beth, and Kevin and Kimberly McKinney, Debbie and Tom Pratt, Dave Boger, some old church friends, the Garef Sisters, my unofficial campaign chaplain, Reverend Kevin Anthony and his wife, Lillian, Reverend David Gerth, Sarah Phelps, the owners of what turned into our unofficial campaign headquarters, owners of the Gallery Pub in the Sixth Ward, David and Julie Gant, my longtime friends, Sarah Baker and Danielle Spradley, Lauren Curdie, Sam Williams, and a group of Chip Squin scholars-alums who came to support me from all over the country, fellow journalists. I wanted to shout out my folks from the Latina community because, as I talked about in my campaign, I may be the first Latina, but I'm not the last, and I'm dedicated to that. Hopefully, in another four years, you'll see names like mine and accents also on the campaign trails. But some of those people today are Alejandro Ortega, Enrique Gomez, Ben Melina, Hector Vega, Maria Rosario, Ivan Ortiz, Michael Zambrana, Toni and Maria Teresa Maldonado, and Omar Maldonado, Carlos Ramirez, Si Se Puede and She Se Puede. I also want to acknowledge the people who came before me and supported me on this journey, like former Alderwoman Annie Rice, who's up in the gallery who was waving to me yesterday. Thank you for your service and for leaving this legacy of change that we can all act on in this session. Also wanted to thank former Alderwoman, now Director of Operations, Christine Ingracia, for your help in answering my policy questions. And also to President Megan Green for your support, your compassion, and again, answering all the things that I didn't know I would need to know, and it's probably not going to stop, even if you've left. The organization that supported me during the campaign, including but not all, Laborers, thank you, CWA, Local 73, SEIU, the Sixth Ward Democrats, some of my public relation colleagues who supported me, my colleagues Jackie and Ken, Teri Hoffman, Alyssa, Connor, Valisa, AJ, and Danielle, and to one colleague, Fran Weems, who always encouraged me to chart my own change-making path. I want to thank all the residents of the Sixth Ward, and thank you to the board staff. I know you had a long day yesterday, and you came today to turn it, to get all of this prepared for us and moved us, so thank you. En gracias a todos y en palante a todos en nuestra comunidad y en nuestras aldeas. Gracias.
Alderwoman from the Seventh.
So Seventh Ward and I rise. I... I took notes like everyone else. You know, for me, the first folks that I want to thank are the peoples whose sacrifices have helped pave the way for me to be here today and who are not able to be here with me today. I absolutely want to name Michael Brown. Had it not been for him, I would have never entered into community organizing and really thought about power structures and decision-makers and wouldn't be here. De Cor Faith Walker, I want to thank her for everything she ever did to me and gave to me, and I know that wherever she is watching me from in the sky today, she is so proud. My parents and family, my special guests today, are my mom and my little brother. You know, Mom, I love you so much. If I can love this city with the love that you have loved me with, if I can have the patience and the grace and the understanding that you have given me, if I can have that with my colleagues and with the residents of the city, then I know that this is going to go great. And Isaiah, like, as an 18-year-old, 19-year-old, like, this is your city, and I'm glad that you just get to see someone that looks like you step up to the plate. And also, you were my top poll greeter all day, 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and whatever else I needed, so thank you. There is such a large coalition of organizations, you know. Mo political, I had the honor of being their client and working with them to run this campaign. We all know how much work that is, but they made it as easy as it could possibly be. And also Vivian, who was a specific campaign manager, so I definitely want to thank her. Megan, President Green, sorry. Christine Ingracia, Alderman Dan Gunther, Alderwoman Annie Rice. You know, when I had the idea to run and, like, felt a little overwhelmed, you guys took my calls, answered it all the time, and obviously, especially Christine, Dan, and Annie. Dan, and Annie, I'm now gonna get all your emails for the speed bumps or, you know, all the things, the potholes, the things you all have in mind, so I'll be calling you again so we can get back to that. Um, and then I, I definitely want to thank all of the unions and all of the organizations that supported the campaign. I was overwhelmed sometimes at the amount of support that came. You know, there was no gap that really honestly couldn't be filled, so thank you to all of you. And, you know, as I'm in, in this seat, have the pleasure of being the one to serve in it, I look forward to working together to push our agenda forward. So, from Action St. Louis to Pro Choice Missouri, Sierra Club, um, of course, AFT 20, the Teachers Union, um, St. Louis Labor Council, all of you all. And then, you know, the, the 7th Ward and the neighborhoods that make up the 7th Ward, Fox Park, Graboy Park, Ben Park West, Tiffany Heights, the Gate District, Botanical Heights. Um, I'm so excited for us to get to work. Many of you all, leadership have already reached out, some of us have already chatted, so excited about that. Um, and then, you know, to all of my colleagues, you know, even those that departed yesterday, I, I watched the meeting and just coming in and having orientation and getting a chance to meet with department hands and hearing that you all did not have that, that you literally just kind of got thrown in the water and it was sink or swim. I have already developed such a deep respect for you all, being able to do what you do and making it look so easy. And I'm so glad that you all have, like, made sure that those of us who are newer and coming in, that we don't necessarily have to sink or swim, because the goal of leadership is not for, like, us to each prove that you gotta struggle like I struggled or you have to get hazed into it. The goal of collaborative leadership is that we will get to learn from each other and we will be, um, better for it. And then, you know, I, one thing I did this morning on my way here, I was really thinking about how many funerals I've attended for people under the age of 18 this year. Um, and I counted 10 that I've attended. And so, especially being the youngest alderperson, um, on the board, um, and hearing some of the conversations yesterday, I really want, if anyone is watching this or if anyone is at home, or all of the morning parents and families, I want you to know that my dedication and my commitment, just as it was on the Board of Education, is the same here. I want young people to know that this is our city to inherit and we have a right to say in how it's shaped and decisions that are made. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the 8th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. We are all here today because the voters in our respective wards trusted us to represent their best interests, our collective best interests as a community and as a city. It's truly an awesome power that we all have. Trust is such an awesome power, and I feel incredibly honored, um, and humbled to be among the new 14 down here. Um, as a returning alderperson, um, I look forward to continuing the work with my, my, my continuing, uh, colleagues, and perhaps more importantly, welcome the new alderpeople to joining this historic board, as well as the President of the Board, Megan Green. I want to thank the voters of the 8th Ward and recognize a few folks here, including my former colleagues that are here today, Annie Rice, Jimmy Lappy, I see, I see, um, I saw Bill Stevens, and my favorite alderman, Dan Gunther. Thank you for your service. Thank you for being here today and continue to work with the new board. And sorry, Christine Ingracia, I didn't mean to ignore you down here on the floor, but certainly continue, continue to work with us, the new, especially the new, uh, alderpersons among us. I'd like to recognize Maddie Kenobi, who helped so much with my campaign. And Isaiah Santiago, as well. And my honored guest with me on the floor, my favorite constituent, my son, Si. And, uh, just wanted, uh, open my door, um, to all of you all, um, especially those new, uh, among us, to work together to continue to improve our city.
Alderman from the 9th.
Thank you all. Um, it's, it's humbling to be here. Uh, I suppose I ought to start off with who's right here with me today. Thank you to my mother, Mitch Browning, uh, who raised me with progressive values, who raised me the person, to be the person that I needed to be, that I wanted to be. She gave me room to grow and here I am today. I can't thank her enough. I have to thank someone who's not here today. My father, who passed away a year ago, Sunday. He taught me how to be selfless, how to work hard, how to always put others before myself and just, uh, put everything in, of myself into everything I do and to be proud of that work. Uh, I can't thank him enough and I wish he could be here with us today. The other person who's here, my amazing wife, Sarah Kogan, who, uh, I'll be married to coming up here almost 10 years. For those of you who are lucky enough to have a spouse join you in your race and actually be part of your race, to help you every single day by either knocking doors or doing research or doing, ugh, phone call time, uh, you know, that's, that's a, uh, quite a drag, uh, to do all that work, but to sit there and, and go through it all and then also to be there for me, it's incredible. And I wish that everyone was as lucky as I am, uh, to have somebody as, like Sarah. I have to thank my team at Mo PC. Um, huge, huge thank you to Geneva Lee, who was, uh, exactly the campaign manager that I needed. Uh, proud to call her a friend. She is someone who's gonna move this city forward with us. Chris Cammy, who is somebody that just has such a presence, has such a stability, just really guides you through the toughest of times with such wisdom for his age, it's incredible. This all started with St. Louis Young Democrats and the Forest Park Southeast Neighborhood Association. Uh, that is where I come from. I come from my community and I have to thank them. There are lots of good people in this city that are working to move this city forward, and they do it without pay. They do it just because they care about their neighborhood or they care about their community. So I have to send a huge shout-out to those organizations. Uh, and specifically, uh, Dan Doling and Sarah Mangapura, who were, uh, the two friends who sat down with me in a coffee shop over a year ago and started planning this run with me. We did something incredible here, and I have to thank the people of the 9th Ward for trusting me. Uh, as someone who is new to the scene, who came in, who just tried to show you that I'm gonna work hard for you, you know, the people of the 9th Ward really stood up and said, "We're gonna give you this chance," and I have to say thank you to all of them. Uh, specifically, those people who put themselves out there. Uh, we were challenging two incumbents and we know how this city works, that's tough to do. People like Kimberly Ann Collins, who said, "You know what? I know you and I trust you and I'm gonna put my name on the line for you too." I want to thank my committee people in the 9th Ward, Gail Farwell and Parker Lovelace. And Kitlaus, uh, Treasurer Adam Lane, St. Louis American, Pro Choice Missouri, all these people came out and endorsed us in this tough race. Gonna be there for Labor. Gotta thank Labor, we all do. They built this city, they keep this city running. Specifically, I want to shout out United Auto Workers, Teamsters Local 688, Firefighters Local 73. We can't forget about the young people in this city, so want to shout out Washington University College Democrats. To all the people who sat down with me before I announced this run, discussed what the role was going to be, really tried to help give me advice, some cases warned me. So, uh, just a special thanks to all of you, especially, uh, former alderman Bill Stevens, uh, who not only threw his endorsement my way, but also just, you know, showed that care and that empathy that he's known for. I also want to thank the people who came out from the county, uh, because this is a regional effort what we're doing here. Uh, we are the board for the city, but we have to understand that everything we do here affects our entire region, and I think people all across this region understand that, and that's why we had people come out from all over the county to help with our campaign. Uh, specifically, I really want to say a special thank you to Melissa Greenstein. If you haven't had a chance to meet her, she's an amazing woman. We have an incredible opportunity in front of us and I know I'm gonna take this seriously. The decisions we make in the next few years are going to echo for the next several decades. What we do in this chamber is going to affect people's lives, not just now, but far into the future, because we have a very unique opportunity here in front of us today. I'm ready to stand up for St. Louis, for everyone in this wonderful city. I'm ready to work with this board, to work hard, and to serve. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the 10th.
All right. Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Good afternoon, everyone, again. I didn't make a list today, because every time I tried to sit down and make my list, I got too emotional. We talked about yesterday, the journey, right, and paying attention to the journey and not paying attention to the reward. Today, I'm paying attention to the reward, because the journey was hard. It was hard this time for various reasons, but I'm choosing, along with a lot of people that I know will be with me, to move forward, to move this board forward, to move our city forward, to move our communities forward. And I definitely could not have done any of this without a number of people, right? I couldn't get up here and go long enough with my list. If you, if they got kitchen cabinets, I probably had a cabinet warehouse with me on this race, inside and outside, and I thank God for each and every one of them. I'mma definitely thank my children, Ayana, Lil Rodney, Jabari, Atala, and Aisha. And like my colleague from the 9th said, um, in regards to having a spouse that's on a campaign with you every day, I would like to thank my husband, former state legislator, Rodney Hubbard. Who, we like tit for tat on this now, right? He, we, we can't even make up a title for the role that he plays, um, in my campaign and my everyday life and my children's life. And so, uh, what I say is, what I take and I don't take for granted, is, one of the things people tell me is that they see a difference in me, right? And, um, I like that. You know, they say, "Why you call yourself Aldo Lady?" I won't tell who gave me that name, but it's because they said it was different and it, and that's how I carried and that's how they saw that there was a difference in me. Again, I don't take a second of that for granted. And I plan to run now, continue to run, continue to serve, the entire 10th Ward, the entire 10th Ward, the same way I ran my campaign, through a position of peace, through a position of inclusion, through a position of transparency, collective cooperative works with the people who I earned their support, standing on the experiences, lived experiences that got me here, and the relationships that I don't take for granted, that I take most especially every time I make a vote, every time I have a conversation, every time I make a phone call, answer an email. Because one thing is for sure, what you do have is your word. What you do have is your word. And like, uh, my colleague from the 2nd said about, if there was something I wanted to say to the new alderpeople, it would be to come down here and remain down here your authentic self. Even when your feelings get hurt, even when somebody's trying to tell you to do something that you know might be in the best interest of the constituency that got you down here, you owe it to them, right? You owe it to them, not to anybody else, to stand at your desk, at your mic, and be your authentic self. And people will see the difference and they will respect you more for it. So I'm so grateful for this opportunity to continue to serve down here at the Board of Aldermen. So many losses, but today, this is absolutely a win. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the 11th.
Hello. Good morning and thank you, Madam President and members of the board. Just in case anybody does not know my name, my name is Laura May McElrath Keys, which is an unusual name for someone who looks like me. But today, I want to, first of all, thank God. Thank God. It took me a long time to get here. And I want to thank, first of all, this man, my boyfriend, my husband of 37, getting ready to be 38 years, and four boys later. Philip, Sergeant Philip Keys, and, uh, he's in Germany, his fiancee Anna Nicola, um, our son Matthew, his fiancee Rebecca Scalisi, uh, our son Joshua, his wife is, like, oh, Lord. Kyadria Keys, and, uh, our, our youngest son, Jacob Keys. And so, along with that, I, I stand on the shoulders of so many people. Um, I, I always tell people I'm living out my mother's wildest dreams. My mother pushed education, she worked two jobs, uh, to make sure that her children were educated. And I walked across stages and I've walked into rooms that she never would have dreamed of. My mother was a victim of domestic violence, and through all of that, she still pushed her children to be the very best people. So I just want to take a few minutes to run down my list of people I want to thank. I have to thank my siblings, 12 siblings. I am the sixth child, second girl, of 12 children of John and Harriet McElrath. So Brenda, Calvin, Melvin, Ricky, or Richard, Mark, Wayne, Paul, Orlando, Kenya, Donna, and I don't think I missed anybody. Was anybody counting? We used to do the same thing at dinnertime. So hopefully, I got everybody into that, that list. And my, my brother, hello, Wayne. Wayne is, uh, he runs his own company, he lives in Dubai, and he was, uh, wonderful in sending me to Dubai year before last to spend a month, and so I, I want to make sure that I publicly tell, tell him thank you so much for that trip. So again, it took a lot of people to get me here, and I want to especially thank my team, uh, team person, Lucinda Frazier. I want to thank everybody who has ever been a committee man or committee woman, uh, those past and present that I've served with. Uh, my God, you know, their level of commitment and what most people don't know is that committee men and committee women, these are elected volunteers in our state and in our city government. And they go unnoticed and oftentimes unheard, but they do so much work, uh, for our state and for our city, and, and I just want them to, to have a round of applause today, because they work so very hard. I want to especially thank, um, the, the, my own committee people, my husband, James Keys, who is now the 11th Ward Committee Man, and my Committee Woman, Amber Cole. I want to thank John Watson and, and Yolanda Yogi Yancy, uh, for all of their help with my campaign, and, and everybody else, uh, who is a committee person, who came to my aid, who came to my side to help me. I want to thank my people up in the gallery. So I see Dave Sweeney up there, I see Matt Sissel, I see Tim, um, let's see, who else do I see up there? Dan. Uh, so, so many people. Guys, thank you so much, I couldn't do anything without you. I thank our labor unions. I am a former, um, uh, what is it, a shop steward for CWA, and, uh, I was also a very vocal member for Local 420. And I am so happy to see unions coming back. My mother was a steel worker for Missouri Rolling Meals, and she was a Teamster. And what she taught us is that you don't cross the picket line, I don't care what they're selling. And I want to see that come back, that we are supporting our unions. Our unions have built this country, and I, I long for the day to see them have the strength and power that our unions want. and power that our unions once had. Additionally, I want to just invoke a few names here. So I had a wonderful boss coming up as a young woman, and I said to a fellow Alderwoman who was inaugurated today as well, I said, "You are crafting the woman that you're going to become." And during the time that I was crafting who Laura was going to be, I had a wonderful boss. He was the principal at Farragut School, Jimmy Irons. And Jimmy Irons taught me how to run a business before I had a business. And I ran my own business for 13 years, with the largest number of independently owned biometric fingerprinting sites in the state of Missouri. And when I talk about people, past and present, it is to remind me, to ground me in what I know to be, is, what I know to be the right thing to do. Oftentimes, people will say, "Why do you wear a uniform all the time?" I started wearing a uniform today, but I was advised not to. In fact, funny story about that. One of my constituents said, "Girl, what you gonna wear?" I saw a girl, "I might wear my uniform," and I was joking, but she said, "Uh-uh, I got an outfit." So this, Monique Reese, is, was one of my constituents, she said, "Oh, girl, I got you. I got, uh-uh, I got an outfit for you." So she sent me this outfit over, so that I would not wear my uniform today. I want to thank my personal paparazzi jewelry consultant, Jackie Tyler, I should say Pastor Jackie Tyler. And just anybody else that I may have forgotten, I do want to make sure that I give a shout out to the Recorder of Deeds. My God, when I tell you, I was a federal investigator, and was drowning in, oh my God, so much paperwork. And the Recorder's Office contacted me, I said, "It's the first time in my life, job came to me." And they literally rescued me. And I want to thank Michael Butler for that. And the staff in that office is just tremendously wonderful. Additionally, I want to thank all of our staff here, in the Board of Alderman's office, especially my secretary, Lamisha. But let me tell you what I love about these people. It doesn't matter which secretary I go to for anything, they never say, "Oh, you need to talk to your secretary." They take care of it. I love that initiative, I love that about you. And I just want to make sure that you get those bit of flowers today from me. Additionally, to my fellow new and former Alder people, I am so looking forward to this experience with you. But let me not forget, before I get off of this microphone, Marlene Davis. Say it, Marlene Davis. Say it with me now, come on. Marlene Davis. Marlene Davis has been truly a mentor, a mother, sister, friend, here at the Board of Alderman, for me and for so many of you. And I am so grateful for her help, for her support, for her mentoring. I am looking forward to the great things that I'm going to be able to do, because I know that I can call on her and others like her, who have some real boots-on-the-ground, feet-on-the-street experience about what it is that we can do here at this Board of Alderman. I like people who tell me what they can do, not what they cannot do. And I love that can-do spirit about Marlene, and I thank her so much for her support here today. Additionally, here he comes, walking through the door. Y'all say Terry Kennedy with me. Terry Kennedy?
Terry Kennedy.
I love me some Terry Kennedy. Terry Kennedy, I call him the oracle. And so when I called Terry, I called and I said, "Oh gracious oracle, I come to you once again to draw water from the well." And that is the way that I see him truly able to provide that bit of wonderful information that is so true and informative. And he is someone who I feel like this Board just simply could not do without. And I am so grateful for him, and I'm grateful for his wisdom. And so again, I thank you all so much. Oh, did I say I need to thank the people of the 11th Ward, the new 11th Ward? So right now, our ward stretches quite a long way, from north to south. And so I am going to be working with them and those neighborhood organizations, so that we can have balance, balance, a balance of businesses and commerce and beautiful housing. So we have our work cut out for us, no matter what ward we're in. But let us be about the people's work, and I thank you.
Alderwoman from the 12th.
There you go, members of the Board. This is a really great day. It's a great day, because I've been re-elected so many times, almost don't know how many. I love a good fight. The more you come after me, the better I get. And during this long fight as the Alderwoman from the new 10th, because I, no, 10th, Shem and Clark Hubbard said, that it was hard. It was not so hard for me. I just got out of the hospital, you all know, in October, then we had to file for office, and I was mending. But for 48 years, 48 years, this man right here has been by my side. It don't matter how you come for Sharon Tyus, because Sterling Samuel Miller stands right there and says, "If you come for her, you come for me." He is my committee man, he is my husband, we've been married 35 years, October 29th. We've been together, we met when we were 19 and 20 years old. When I hear young people talk about, "Oh, the newness, newness," I feel like they're attempting to marginalize what your seniority, your experience, your education. That's fine to be new, as long as you understand everybody is not new, and you should be so lucky that you get to be old, okay? I have been very fortunate to be with this man, that's why I'm here in the city of St. Louis. Because when I met him in 1975, he said to me, "I am going to come back home." He was getting a degree in political science, and I was in dental school, six-year dental program. He said, "I'm going to come back home to St. Louis, and I'm going to fix up St. Louis, and I'm going to rehab houses." And then I came home, and I met the people over in where we live now, Kingsway East, which was where he was born. And I met all these beautiful, middle-class and upper-middle-class black people, and I'm from a working-class family. I said, "Do your family know any plumbers or anything like that?" Because I met Dr. Bond, Dr. Such-and-Such, lawyer Such-and-Such, the person who owned the American lived there, the person who owned the Sentinel lived there, the person who owned the Argus lived there. And I was in awe. But what I was really in awe, is this man didn't, took that in stride. His father used to be the principal of Sumner, his mother was a math teacher, his father started the magnet school program. He could have been a child of privilege. Instead, he was a child who came back home to work on his community. And we lived in the Central West End, we lived in South St. Louis for seven years, and then he said, "I want to go home, home in Kingsway East." And I didn't want to go. I was like, "Oh no, I don't want to live in North St. Louis." And he said, "Oh, I need to go home." So there we went. We bought the worst house on Maffet Place and made it the best house on Maffet Place. And we raised heck, and I really raised heck. And down the street from me lived a man named John Bass, and he was the state senator. And I raised heck with him, I raised heck with Congressman Bill Clay. I was a heck raiser, because really, I'm saying, I'm a hell raiser, and I still am. And I raised so much, that they came to me and said, "Sharon, you need to come inside. You're doing all that heck raising, you need to bring that inside." I told this story before, I said, "No, for one year and a half, I don't want to be a politician, because they're crooks, and I'm not a crook." And that was my story, I'm not a crook. And for a year and a half, I had a congressman and a state senator pursue me, because they said, "We need black lawyers down at the Board of Alderman." And I had graduated from law school, and we were in our house rehabbing it, "And we need people who are committed and cannot be bought. We need somebody like you." I thought Bill Clay and John Bass were crazy, because I'm like, "You got all these other people that's in your organization, they want to be it, I don't want to be it." And he said, "That's why we want you, because you don't want it. You don't want it so much that you will give up everything to be it." And Congressman Clay is exactly right. And I'm still friends with all the people mostly that brought me to this seat in 1991. In fact, Bill Clay emailed me this morning, "Think about this, this man is in his 90s." He said, "Good luck, Sharon Tyus, you're still got it." I love that. I call him, I'm respectful to him, I brought him some problems that I had. I can call people that I've met in 1990, '89, like Martha West, who was not with me. She did not like me when I got elected, because I ran against Steve Roberts Sr., and that was her guy. And when I won for about four of my terms, she did not support me. And finally, she said, "Sharon, you're going to keep winning anyway, so I'm going to support you." And what she would do, every time I won, Martha West, everybody in black community, you know who she is, Martha West would call me the next day and say, "Okay, you won, so let's get to work." She never told me a lie, like, "I'm with you and I'm not," she said, "I'm not with you." That was good. But these last two times I've run, I want to tell you, if you don't know how to have Martha West on your side, you don't know anything. Martha West calls everybody, black ministers, everybody, and they said, "Martha West already told me to be with you. Martha West already told me to be with you." And that's something, to have the black ministers with me, a lot of them this time, because during my tenure as the 20th Ward Alderwoman, they lined the chambers to get me out of office. They actually came to do a recall against me, which I beat them, broke up their whole clergy coalition. I've had fights with the clergy coalition, the NAACP, First Black Mayor, whatever. But it never was personal for me, my fights were always about my community. Because people tried to marginalize North St. Louis, and they tried to make it monolithic. And they have this idea, they can tell me what North St. Louis is better than me, and you cannot. You also cannot be blacker than me. If you are not black, you cannot tell me how to be black. I am not going to think that is okay. And I don't have to be uneducated to be down here shuffling and saying, "I'm so glad there's somebody that is not Sharon Tyus," it's never going to be. When I came down here, they treated black women like mammoths. I hated that. So the first thing, "All you people call yourself Alderwomen?" I fought. I refused to be called Alderwoman, Alderman. So I said, they said, "Well, Alderwoman, you got to be called Alderman." I said, "No, I don't. If you called us the Board of Negroes, I wouldn't call myself a Negro either." So I went about every year, fighting until we got the rules changed, so we could be called not, if you didn't want to be called Alderwoman, you didn't have to be, but you had the choice to be. Choice is what I'm about. Understanding the differences in people and accepting that, not thinking, "I got to be like you," or that you can think for me. And also respecting my community's decision. Because I didn't yield in 2001, and I think about this every time I put my foot in this chambers, in 2001, winning with the biggest margin, a second biggest margin in the city, and having a really good turnout, and not losing population, did I say racist Francis Lay enough yet, led a thing to tear my ward up. And the clerk talked about consequences of history, they tore up my ward, and they put it in what was called the 4th Ward. And I just had to have 30 or 40 houses demolished, because my ward that didn't hardly have, there was a middle-class ward, upper-middle-class, that they compared to the 16th Ward, they would always do that, 16th Ward and the 20th Ward, these are the middle-class, upper-middle-class wards. We had to tear down 38 houses, I think, in continuing, in that part they gave to the 4th Ward, so that you can drive down Euclid and see the difference between the east side of Euclid and the west side of Euclid. But, and I had to call all the people and beg them to stay, and I was so disgusted, I went home and said, "I'm out of politics." But I believe in God, so the Alderwoman from the 11th, the new 11th, said, "All power to God." God said, "Sharon Tyus, get back up, because we're not finished with you. I'm not finished with you." And so in 2000, and I'm sorry, in 9, so I left in 2003, and 2004 and '05, the people who had stabbed me in my back came and said, "We can't do what you do." This, the people who actually stabbed me in my back came and said, "You have to get back in politics." I said, "I don't want to, I'm good. I don't want to ever do that again." They came back, and I came back to politics, and I became a committee person, and that was good. I learned how valuable committee people are. They are some of the most undervalued people, they don't get paid, but they endorse, they get out, they try to keep the votes up. So we had really long conversations about when you destroy the most democratic ward in the city that votes the highest, what is that about but race? That's race. We have never been addressed. I am going to come forth with a board bill and a resolution to address the $10 million that was stolen from my community by moving a ward. We always hear these people talk about, "Oh, we want to do reparations." Well, reparations is standing right here, we're owed $10 million. So when I think about, while I was gone, we went to having 14 wards and the charter change, that's because they never could get it out when I was here. I'm still opposed to it. Everybody thought I was opposed to it, because I thought I couldn't win. I'm opposed to it, I feel horrible about it, because look at the big wards in North St. Louis. Take a look at the city maps, and look at some of the compact and contiguous wards, and then look at the big things that happened in North St. Louis. We basically got three black people, four some, that represent North St. Louis now. We have never had a fair amount of black people that represent North St. Louis. And having white people pick a black person in South St. Louis is not North St. Louis, it is racism. So when I come down here, I think about racism every single time. I think about that in 2001, my vote was stolen, because they didn't just tear up my ward, they made it so we couldn't vote, that my vote was stolen, that my husband's vote was stolen, that my in-laws, that we live on the same alley, their votes were stolen, and the people that I represent, they had their vote stolen in 2001, and everybody rolled their eyes back, because you never had your vote stolen, especially for a black person. So I don't like 14 wards. Black people need to be able to vote. We died to be able to vote, and then this arrogant board tore it up, and then they rolled their eyes when I talk about my seniority, and they want to lump me in, it's like talking about gay rights, and then somebody say, "Well, what about heterosexual rights?" Please, it is not the same thing. I want to thank my husband for getting me to come to St. Louis, and to come to the Kingsway East neighborhood, because we could have bought a house in the Central West End for $2,000 more, and we knew it was going to be valuable. But God really does need people who are willing to fight the fight, to stand up for black people, to talk about black issues. Because when you have white people who want to be dictators, who want to run North St. Louis, want to tell you, want to take family names, and to libel them and slander them as the reason why people shouldn't be, they don't. My mother always says to me, she's 88 years old, and she says, "You must be the cleanest person in St. Louis." Because all they ever say about you is, "You don't get along with nobody," or they make up a lie that you easily prove is a lie. I do live a pretty clean life. I don't drink, I don't smoke, I've been this man for 19 years. I like my community, I'm not ashamed of being black, I'm proud of being black. When I came here, there were no women who were lawyers. And I had one of the 8th Ward Aldermen, who was a lawyer, said to me, "I'm not used to women having law degrees. We're not used to women being able to read contracts." He had to get used to that. I can read a contract, I understand the law. I had one of my law professors reach out to me the other day in an email, and say, "Wow, Sharon, you won again." I had so many people so scared for me in this election, because the mayor, and the president of our Board of Alderman, and then that little boy that they didn't know, who ended up being the treasurer, all came out, they were going to beat me. They were going to come over to my house and beat me in my house. There's a song called, "It's my house and I live here." My people weren't having any of that. So they got on the phones almost on every block, I didn't knock doors, they called for me. They said, "Alderwoman, are you all right?" I never got so many prayers sent at me, I had a prayer circle around me, including, I'mma have to tell this, the Alderwoman's husband called me, "Are you all right?" Thank you. Thank you, my brother. Thank you. Everybody was worried. Because what they say to you, and you ain't going to like this, is Sharon Tyus will speak out for the black community, you not scared to say what needs to be said about the black community. Now, the people who are in office, who decided they was going to come after me, they never listened, or even respected the fact that I've been saying this forever. My community knows what I say, they want me to say it. You can't silence me, because I'm saying what my community wants me to say. I'mma say what I want to say, as long as it represents my community. So when you pick my black leaders with your white faces, those are not black leaders, that's a black face that you have decided to choose, just like you say about Clarence Thomas being at the Supreme Court, chosen by John Danforth, that's what the regres- That's what the regressives, not progressives, do in black communities. We slander people's name. We make everybody that's black, oh, a criminal. Everything we do is criminalized. And then you say, "Oh, we don't want people to be locked up. We want to change." That's all fake. Because watch what happens down at this Board of Aldermen. I was already warned today that the Alderwoman Boyd and I would not be put on any committees together. How is that? We're gonna watch and see if that happens. In fact, I'm gonna tell everything. If you don't, if you try to take my seniority again, that would be a war you will not see. I recalled three Aldermen, three of them. I came back down here in 2013 to get rid of the people who violated my rights. Here I stand. All the people who violated my rights are gone. Violated my community's rights are gone, okay? I stand here, I'm not bossed, I'm not binned, and I'm not scared of the first black female mayor or the first white president of Board of Aldermen. If you do not respect North St. Louis, if you come for me, I'm coming for you. That's how I feel, okay? If you come for me, I'm coming for you. I don't... You talk about a name... Let me say what the president said about fascism. Fascism. Let me tell you who she is. She is the person that I saved from getting put off the Board of Aldermen.
Alderwoman...
Because she made racist remarks. You're not gonna be quiet. You're not gonna make me be quiet. You came into my neighborhood alive. Made racist remarks about Sam Moore. Okay? So then I heard in her speech, she talked about fascism. Okay?
This is an opportunity, Alderwoman, to thank all the people that have supported you.
I am thanking the people, because this is what they want me to do. Fascism, you talked about that, but you are a dictator, and a tyrant, and autocratic, and ignorant, and racist. That's what I think. Now, you ask me what I want to think.
Do you have guests that you are introducing?
I am. This is my guest want me to say this. Now, what about that? You are being a white Becky. Sit down and listen to it. You threw it out, and you talked about other people.
It is my...
You threw it out, and you talked about other people. And you called...
It is my job as president of the board to restore decorum to this chamber. You may take your seat now, Alderwoman. You may take your seat now. Every member of this body has been professional today in thanking the folks that helped them get here today. And we are asking you to please give the same courteousness to the other folks that are here. So you can sit down now. Alderwoman from the 13th, you are recognized. This is a warning, Alderwoman. The marshals have been advised that if you do not keep your seat, you will have to be escorted out so that we can restore decorum in this chamber.
I want to thank Michael Butler, the Recorder of Deeds, who also said, "I don't like this going on." I want to thank State Senator Carla May and Steve Roberts Jr., uh, State Mayor Dorsey. I want to thank Lakeisha Bosley, State Representative for Dorsey. I want to thank Larry Middlebrook, State President. I want to thank our friends, Williams and Evans, the former Harvard Ward Aldermen, they came to Dorsey. I want to thank Marlon Anderson. I want to thank Jamila Nashi. I want to thank Florida State Representative Wiley Price. I want to thank Florida State Representative Chris Carter Jr. I want to thank Louis Crawford, pastor of the Teachers Union. I want to thank Fire. I want to thank Warren Gooden, who was from the 13th Ward in Bay. I want to thank SEIU, Service Employees, and Health. I didn't fill out any of the applications about people saying, "We need your support." But SEIU, which is the board of workers that stand to you, have always been with us. So if you don't have time, then I will still endorse for both of their people in Dorsey. I want to thank them. I want to thank the people. You look at me on this floor, I'm not like them all. My people are fighting for my state. And I'm going to avoid this one, because I'm not trying to talk to them.
We have rules in this chamber. We will turn it back on as long as you stay on the order of the business, which is introduction of honored guests. You can...
Right here, there you go. There you go. You are not in charge of me.
I am in charge of this chamber, Alderwoman.
You are not in charge of me, and I'm gonna go again. Let's start again. I want to thank Joe Palm, who I mentored, and who, he has gone through a lot of different changes working for a mayor, a governor, and the president of the United States. I want to thank the committee people who endorsed me and said, "They don't like what's going on, and they're not gonna be a part of it." Sterling Samuel Miller, 1st Ward Committee Man. Larry Middlebrook, 2nd Ward Committee Man. Irma Jefferson, 2nd Ward Committee Woman. Ed McFaulin, 4th Ward Committee Man. Caroline Moore, 4th Ward Committee Woman. Dwayne Evans, 4th Ward Alderwoman. We didn't fight, we worked together. That's what black people do. We work together. We work together. Thank you.
I went to her, and I told her I would back you. I'm not gonna run against you because I know who has the wisdom, the experience, and we want our ward to be better.
Thank you. I want to thank 18th Ward Pastor and Committee Man John Watson. I want to thank 18th Ward Committee Woman Yolanda Yansey. Yo-Yo Yansey, again. I'm so honored. Darlene Green and I have disagreed and worked together for 40 years. She has never ordained to come into my ward and think that you could run against me. That is a no-no. That's when you're young and foolish and don't know what you're doing. I want to thank License Collector Mavis Thompson. I want to thank Recorder of Deeds Michael Butler. I want to thank State Senator Carla May. I want to thank State Senator Steve Roberts. I want to thank State Representative Lakeisha Bosley. I want to thank former Treasurer Larry Williams. These people just appeared and start saying, "Wow, we can't believe that they would be so foolish. We want to endorse you." I want to thank State Representative Marlon Anderson. I want to thank former State Representative Wiley Price. I want to thank former State Representative Chris Carter Jr. I want to thank President, former President of the Teachers Union Louis Crawford. I want to thank former State Senator Jamila Nashi. And at the end, which is so interesting to me, is that Kimberly Collins, who was supporting my opposition, came and said, "She ain't the one, and I want to endorse you too." I want you to know how overwhelming that is. I want to thank FIRE, Institute of Racial Equality. I want to thank Gloria Gooden, who worked with my opponent and said, "Oh, no, we gotta be with you." Again, and I want to again say, SEIU, service employees and health. I didn't fill out any of the surveys because I was so busy making sure that I won. And they sent me a donation anyway and said, "I endorsed you" because they know I have already been there. Now, the labor unions now are all trying to get at my door. But you didn't endorse me. But I'm still for labor anyway. I don't need anybody to endorse me for me to be me. I grew up in labor, my mom's in labor, all my family. I'm one of 32 first cousins. 31 of them are still living. I have a group of people around me that I don't have to care and be defined by nobody else. I'm defined by my family, how I was raised, who stands with me, who stands up with me. And as I said, I'm sad that I look around this chamber, and we had to bring our husbands so that black men are represented in this chambers. If it were not for Rodney Hubbard and Sterling Samuel Miller, we got one black man left in this chamber. That makes me sad. We are not a city that are without black men that can serve. There are some black men that got in trouble, and that is what is used to slander our names. And I know the Hubbard's know about how your name gets slandered. I watched the Bosleys get their name slandered. I watched the Clays. It makes me sad. It makes me sad. It makes me sad that people think that they can throw terms out and then try to turn off your mic. That's a way of being autocratic and controlling. Again, I want to go back to thank Alderman... I'm sorry. Congressman Bill Clay. Thank you for always being there. Thank you for me being able to call you. I want to thank Ollie Stewart, who I could always call. I want to thank Dick, I'm sorry, Ron Gregory. I have a group of older citizens that I can call, and they'll say, "Oh, you shouldn't be like that." Or, "Sharon, have you ever thought about that?" I thank you. I don't believe that being older and experienced is a handicap. I don't believe that you have to be a progressive. If you have to be a progressive to be at this board, then we can just get rid of everybody and say, "We got the president, the mayor, and so we don't exist." Darlene Green is not a progressive. I am not a progressive. I don't want to be one. I want to be my authentic self. And the only people who ever try to turn off my mic are the people who have done things themselves and said things, then they want you not to have a mic. I always have a mic. I can call the press anytime I want to. They call me all the time. I usually do not reply to them. The press called me when they announced that they were gonna run against me. And I said to Austin, who's sitting up there in that chamber, he said, "Are you scared?" I said, "No." Why are I scared? Because they couldn't beat me, and I knew it. And if you want to have a relationship, there has never in my 32 years' experience, a president of the Board of Aldermen had came into a ward and worked against somebody and a mayor. And for you to get beat, you ought to be ashamed of yourself and that you... The smear... I'm gonna bring the smear tactics that they brought, which are all lies. I had the Alderwoman from the 1st now say that they were lies. And I'm gonna tell you that when you want me to be quiet, what you should do is apologize and say, "We shouldn't have done that. And I'm sorry." And how do I get back to that? Because as long as you fight me and try to make me submit to you, I will not. You are not my mother, who I am scared of still, by the way. My mother's 88 years old. And the other person that was here with me in 1991, besides my husband, was my mother. When I called her to say I won, my mother said to me, and she gets up and walks four miles a day, "I already know you were gonna win." What I don't know is why they don't know this is a mistake. She then asked me, "Why are they doing, running... Is this females running somebody against you in Black History Month and in Women's History Month?" She said, "Don't they know that they're standing on your shoulders?" I said, "Mama, they don't care. But I don't care about them either. If they don't care about me, they don't deserve to stand on my shoulders." You have to know your history. For all the young people here, you need to know your history. Celebrate being young, but go and seek out people who know something more than you. It doesn't even have to be somebody older than you. Brandon Bosley brought a lot of wisdom to our caucus and things that we didn't think about, and we listened to him. But don't listen to one person. I don't care if they did help you get elected. Learn that there are different ways to live life and that North St. Louis is underrepresented as we speak today. And so that makes me feel sad. And I want to at least try to talk to you about, maybe we could go to 20 Alderpeople, because it is too much to have 14 wards. And I've already won. So I don't have any personal interest in it except for it is not in the best interest of my community. And I'm sorry that they had to cheat to be able to get that board bill out. And the fruit of the poison tree is poison. And again, I want to end by saying, I thank all the residents of 1st, the 20th Ward, of which 2/3, about 2/3 of my ward is the old 20th Ward. The 1st Ward, I got about a bit of that. And I want to say about 1/4 of my ward is the 1st Ward. And then I got a precinct from the 18th, a precinct from the 2nd. And then I have all of the old 4th Ward, which is the Ville and Greater Ville. I represent Kingsway East, Kingsway West, Pin Rolls, which I have always represented. I represent Mark Twain. I represent the Ville. I represent the Greater Ville. I represent part of Van de Venner. I represent part of Lewis Place. I represent Baden. And I represent Wells Goodfellow, which was also my original ward. My people are kind of confused why they have had their ward tore up so many times and torn around because people do not understand that there is something to continuity. When you've been mayor for 30-some years, you know that continuity is important. When you have somebody that has your back always, you know that continuity is important. When I sit down here and look at the elected officials that sent today, there are at least three of them that I have helped in their elections or their family election. One, I picked up the phone when he couldn't get enough votes and called to make sure he became the state rep. He'll tell you the same story. He couldn't get that person, I did. I helped the Alderwoman from the 10th when she was running for Committee Man. I mean Committee Woman. I've helped the Alderwoman from the 13th now, when her husband was running for Committee Man. What you have to do in our community is work together. I am so proud that we are working together. I am so proud that we are working together. And I'm so proud that I believe in God, that atheist racists can't tell me to shut up and make me do it, and that's you, Megan Green.
Alderwoman from the 13th, you are recognized.
Thank you. Okay, I just want to make sure that you can hear the mic. Uh, I want to thank everybody today that is here, that came back. And I want to thank all the new people that fought to get to where they are today. We are going into a whole new diameter. And everybody that has spoken to me today and said, congratulations. And I said, it has to be somebody either crazy or really strange to want to go with this 14 wa- ward issue. Because the, the, the dynamics that you're running into is not the norm. And so I want people to understand that. The 13th Ward is the longest ward in North St. Louis. It goes 270 to North Riverfront, all the way to Jennings, all the way to Page and Arlington. And then I bump up against the 12th Ward with Alderwoman Tyus to Union and West Florissant. That's over 21,000 people that I will have to serve. And so I had to logistically look at this to say, how will I address this? The ward that I came from had 10,000 residents and we had a plan. We had everything laid out. And you know what happens when you think you got a plan? God start laughing at you, say, really? You don't have no plan. So let me tell you, this is the new plan. So we now are creating a new plan. But I want to thank two angels that have been on my shoulders. Uh, one since August the 1st, uh, 2010, and the other one since December 24th, 2022, Demetrius Johnson, Alderman Greg Carter. I hear Alderman Greg Carter in my ear a whole lot of times when I, my back is against the wall. And I get a lot of criticism because they said, you listen to Sharon Tyus. And people don't know, Sharon Tyus listen to me. And I know you all probably say, Sharon Tyus listen to you? Yeah. Because sometimes we don't agree. And we agree to disagree. But we walk away and we understand our viewpoints are different, but they're alike in so many ways because it's about the community. It's, it's not about me at all. It's about my community having to say so and what they want in their community. I listened to Michael Browning and he told me, when you spoke with the fire department, with the union, you really inspired me. But he don't know, he just inspired me. I was raised in a middle-class black family. My daddy worked for the government. My mom was at home. On the street where we lived at, it was lawyers, doctors, it was detectives, it was teachers. And so when I started raising my kids and I started seeing people suffer, I wasn't used to that. On the street where I was raised, Mr. Softy came down the street. My mom bought everybody a Mr. Softy. So a lot of you youngsters don't know about Mr. Softy. That was the big deal in our neighborhood. My momma would buy every kid on the block a Mr. Softy. And that was your highlight of your day, a soft-serve cone. But when I became a mom and I started raising my children, they didn't have those privileges. You know, I, I, uh, for a short period, I raised, uh, my son in Car Square Village. I saw another side of life that I wasn't used to. I saw where African-Americans had, were suffering and trying to make ends meet. They were trying to decide, am I going to eat or am I going to pay my rent? How are my kids going to take, be taken care of? So I had to like totally regroup my life and my thinking. I had an African-American man, listen to what I'm saying. I gave birth to a son, which was black. And his whole goal to me and his life was to not go to jail and not be in the ground. And I accomplished that goal. And I was proud because I'd never had the police knock at my door. My son didn't do the drug scene. My son went to school. My daughters went to school. They graduated. They went to college. My baby girl came back to the community where we raised her. She became a developer. She built 50 new homes in a neighborhood that a developer wouldn't come to in 40 years, Wilden Park, Beacon, Alcott and Davison. It was unheard of to have development in that community. And what was the asset? Nothing was stolen out of any of those properties and they sold every house. And so all I'm telling you all is, you're looking and you, your eyes are open and you're dead wide open and you're saying, we're going to do all of this? No, it's not that easy. Because you're dealing with people with different personalities, different views and different ideas. And so I keep saying this, the most dangerous words in this city is accountability and communication. And we don't do either one of them. And so because me and Alderwoman Hubbard don't agree on something, it's nothing personal. It's just that we don't agree on that issue. But at the end of the day, I still go to and say, how's your family? What do we need to do on the next page? But when we start doing what we accuse other people are doing, we become our own enemies. We cannot continue to keep having the behaviors, uh, and Alderman, I mean Alderman Kennedy, he'll always be Alderman Kennedy to me. He always said, look at your history. So we cannot continue to do what has been accused of the history of this board and keep doing it and thinking it's okay, it's not. So I want to thank the residents of the 13th Ward that believed in me, that thought that I could do this, that we're going to be okay. I want to thank the committee people, Chris Carter, Mary Davis, Larry Middlebrook, Emma Jefferson. And then I also, I want to make sure that I remember the volunteers. I had people come to me and say, I want to volunteer in campus for you. That was Lisa Brown, Otis, Anthony White. They didn't ask for anything. They just wanted to make sure that I got in there because they knew where my heart was. And so I want to be very transparent. Yeah, I was elected the Alderperson, but I am an employee of the residents of the 13th Ward. They don't kiss my ring, I kiss their ring. Thank you. Thank you.
Alderman from the 14th.
Thank you, Madam Presidents and Members of the Board. Uh, today I rise on behalf of the 14th Ward to, uh, give some thank you to some people. First, um, I want to thank my mom, Tanya Finley. Uh, if it was not for her and taking me around with the former Alderwoman of the 5th Ward, April Ford Griffin, all the after-school event, or back-to-school events, the Christmas drives, the neighborhood cleanups. She really opened up my eyes to what community service is. Also want to thank a man who eventually became my dad, Rick McCall. He was not my biological dad, but he stepped up to the plate. Uh, he's been in my life as long as I can remember. Uh, my mom, uh, gave birth to two beautiful boys and adopted my younger brother. Uh, and he stepped up and he took care of us on top of the kids that he had. He's always been in my corner. Uh, both of them are a huge support system. And I'm just so thankful, um, that they've always been by my side. I got a few. I got a few special guests. I'm glad they was able to stay the, the time. I know it's been a long day. First, I want to introduce and say thank you to my roommate and good friend, Umi Kanisi. She is like my unpaid publicist, uh, unpaid grab any and everything for an event. Um, she's, she's a good ear, uh, when I just need somebody to, uh, talk to about stuff. She's always there. She always shows up. She's always asking what she can do. I want to thank. I want to thank my Auntie Karen, uh, who's been there, uh, every step of the way since I've been a, a, a younger buck. I'm still young, but a younger buck. Um, had me in the church, made sure me and my cousin TT was always there, even though we caused havoc throughout the church ripping and running. Uh, she always made sure we was there, always involved in the community, um, has always supported me, has always just been, uh, a great love and support system. And I'm so thankful to have your Auntie Karen. Also want to thank a special guest that I, uh, been knowing for a long time. Uh, lives in a new part of the ward. Uh, her name is Leo. Uh, she's a huge community advocate, uh, was for the 3rd Ward, but now the 14th Ward. Um, you know, one thing I appreciate about her, uh, we may not, uh, I may not been her outcome in the March, uh, primary, but she cares so much about the community and understands no matters who's in this seat, that it needs to be somebody who's going to actually do for the neighborhood. Uh, and I appreciate how she stepped up and said, I want to help because the 14th Ward need a lot of help. Uh, and no matter who's in the seat, we got to make sure that that person, uh, is successful because it's not about the seat, it's about the people. So thank you so much, Leo, for being here. I think he dashed off. I also want to thank my partner Jay. Um, like people said, you know, it is, um, to, to have somebody by your side in this political, uh, landscape and deciding that you want to run for office and, you know, uh, they commit a lot of time, uh, to your campaign, um, just by you being away and being at community meetings. And, uh, he knows it all, the, the, the moments that I, I rethink if I should be doing this, the times that I cry because, you know, I'm like, it is a contact sport and I've been doing this for a while, but you know, we are still human. And you know, sometimes, um, that contact still hurts. So I'm so thankful to have a best friend and a partner, uh, like him. I want to thank all my family and friends, uh, some that I didn't name, um, that has just continued to, uh, be there for me, uh, show me so much love and support. I want to thank my campaign teams. First time I've actually had to get a campaign team. I've been, uh, kind of doing it on my own these last few years. But I want to thank, uh, Pat Chakovsky, which I know I'm saying her last name wrong, it's like Chakovsky, something like that. Uh, Pat and, and Maura and, and Emma. I want to thank Marquise Govan, uh, a young 20-year-old, uh, young man who is my field director, um, and is the SGA President of SLU. He's a sophomore. Um, he's amazing. Uh, he's, he's been involved in the community for a very long time. And I'm glad that, um, I've been just empowered him, but he empowered me, uh, and pushed me to be better. And thank you, uh, to him so much for knocking on all them doors with me. I want to thank everybody that did knock doors. Uh, you know, during that December, um, March, I mean, December, January, February, it was cold. And it's one thing to pay folks, but it's another thing to have volunteers. So I want to thank all my volunteers a special shout out to Courtney McDermott, that came out pretty much almost every Saturday, every Sunday, gave up her personal time to, uh, help me get across the finish line. I want to thank everybody that gave $5, $2, $100, $500 and maxed me out on $2,600. Uh, thank you because, you know, it takes finances to, uh, make this thing go outside of, um, people power. Also want to thank a lot of my, uh, House members who supported me during this time, who endorsed me, who understood, uh, some of the things I was going through with, uh, wrestling with Jeff City and also trying to be here locally. I want to thank, uh, Representative Berenger. I want to thank Representative Proudey. I want to thank Representative Anderson. I want to thank Representative Butts. Uh, and I especially want to give a shout out to Representative Kim Collins, who, uh, was out there with me, uh, so many days, um, and, you know, made sure that she didn't just endorse, but she actually put, uh, her feet and boots on the ground. I want to thank all the union organizations. I won't, uh, say them all, but a huge shout out to my SEIU family. Um, you know, you guys have been with me with the Fight for 15. That organization really, uh, empowered me and implanted skills in me, uh, to be not just an activist, but the leader that I am today. Um, and, and so many other, uh, young people that they empower. I want to thank, uh, Action St. Louis. I want to thank St. Louis Young Dims. I want to thank, um, Promo. I want to thank, um, Missouri Pro Choice, all the, all my labor friends up in the gallery and the, and ones that are not there. Thank you, uh, for boots on the ground, firefighters, labor, local Clint McBride and his organization 110, uh, and, and 42. Thank you, guys, and, and so many others, pipe fitters and plumbers and everything. So thank you. Um, and Oregon, and I mentioned all the organizations. I want to give a huge shout out to, uh, my mayor, uh, the people's mayor, Mayor Tashara Jones, uh, for getting out there and endorsing me. And, uh, when I, uh, got out of high school in 2012, I worked on her campaign as treasurer. Uh, and from there, I supported her when she first ran for mayor and didn't make it. And me and Ann Switzer worked on that campaign. Uh, Alderwoman Ann Switzer. Um, you know, and she, uh, helped me get a job as a treasurer officer. And, you know, I, I appreciate, uh, the vision that she has for the city of St. Louis. And I want to be, uh, help to make sure that, uh, the people's agenda get done. Also want to thank, uh, Madam President, Megan Green. You know, we go way back Ferguson days. Uh, we didn't just talk about it, we put our bodies on the line. Uh, we was out there day in and day out, uh, making sure we find justice or whatever that looks like in the name of Michael Brown. Uh, you've always been a friend. Uh, we haven't always agreed. Sometimes I supported people that, uh, was in your race that wasn't you. But, you know, what you did is you never took it, um, to a level personally. Um, you, you knew that maybe I supported the person because, uh, their views for that position was better. Um, but I thank you for always being a friend, a confidant, uh, and being a good support system. I want to thank, uh, Comptroller Darlene Green, uh, for endorsing me in my race. I have the support of SHENA, uh, the E&amp;A Board, which is all, uh, women. It's great in history to finally have a E&amp;A Board of all women. Uh, also want to thank, I don't think he's in the room, uh, Clerk Terry Kennedy. Before I was, uh, actually elected, I used to go over to the bookstore and he mentored me a lot. Uh, talk, you talk about history and, and young people need to know their history. Um, it's also good when you have mentors that seek out young people to say, I want to, uh, mentor you. And that's what he did to me. He seeked me out, um, and every Tuesday and Thursday, I would go to the bookstore and he would lay a wealth of knowledge into me. Sometimes I was falling asleep because I was, you know, probably up late, uh, the night before, but, um, you know, he told me, uh, a lot of great things that, you know, I won't share with the body, but I'm just so thankful to have a person like him. Also want to thank Congresswoman Cori Bush, who, uh, took the time to, uh, support me. We go way back Ferguson days. Uh, she's my ride or die. I appreciate all the great work she does. I want to thank several former Alderpeople who are here. Alderman, former Alderman from the 9th Ward. Uh, you know, I call you nature boy, uh, Ric Flair, Alderman Dan Gunther. Uh, you know, you show up, uh, you, you really care about the community. Um, you, we've been in this struggle since 2016. Uh, I'm so glad to see what's going to be your next move, but I always appreciate you supporting me in my current move. I also want to thank, uh, former committee woman, former Alderwoman Annie Rice. We started on a journey together back in 2016, uh, when they also told us just kind of wait a little bit and sit down and, you know, wait your turn. But at the end of the day, we was elected, uh, to that position that people believed in us. And I appreciate, uh, all that you've done, um, to make the 8th Ward great and also help make the Central Committee great. Also want to thank, uh, Committee Man Joe Palm. Uh, he is, uh, again, another elder who, uh, has installed a lot in me. You know, sometimes he, he pull me under his, uh, his, his, his shoulder, like, you need to listen. And then I jab him a little bit in the stomach too, like, you do too. But, uh, you know, that, that love and support, uh, is truly appreciative. Also want to thank Alderman, uh, Bill Stevens, uh, for being your authentic self and all the work that you done at the board. I don't know, and Jimmy, Alderman Jimmy Lappi, who is here. Uh, we've done a lot of work with Missouri Jobs of Justice. I promise I'm going to wrap it up. I won't be too long. I want to, uh, thank, uh, the staff of the President Board of Alderman. Uh, I want to thank Christina Garcia, who, again, several years ago, I thought it should have been Michelle Wit House, uh, and who was running at the time when, you know, you was running and we, uh, built the relationship from there. Uh, Christine, uh, I want to thank you. I, I've got, I'm, I'm getting the Christines and Christinas all together. I want to thank you, uh, for just being amazing support system to all the new folks and orientation. I want to thank Yusuf. The staff has, uh, truly been so supportive and, and helpful, um, with the orientation that they had, a two-day orientation, meeting all the directors, uh, being able to have mock interviews. It is, you know, just very appreciative. But also want to thank the board staff, um, Sharita and Tracy and, and so many others. You know, y'all came in and, you know, treated us like family, even though we may be newbies, y'all, uh, you know, it was like, what can we do to help? Uh, Tracy won't go with me, but I keep trying to recruit her, but it's okay, that'd be a different story. Uh, lastly, I want to, um, even though she's not here anymore with me, I want to acknowledge my grandmother, who, um, would have been super excited to see me get to this, uh, stage. Um, you know, grannies are like your second mom, uh, because sometimes you're like, mama tripping. So I can go to granny and like confine her. And, and my granny, uh, was amazing woman. Um, she helped me so much, um, over my political career and not even just that, uh, to be the young man that I am. And granny, this, this is for you. I know you was watching down and, uh, love you. I want to, um, I want to thank the people of the 78th District that, uh, still with me over these last four years, um, continue to elect me, uh, didn't have a challenger for the last, uh, two times I ran. I greatly appreciate it. I want to thank the people of the 5th Ward that, uh, elected me back in 2016 as a committee man, youngest African-American committee man in St. Louis history, and continue to still by my side. And I want to thank the people of the new 14th Ward. You know, I look forward to working with everybody, uh, from downtown to Car Square to Columbus Square, uh, to Old North, to St. Louis Place, to College Hill, to Hyde Park, every neighborhood, for the ones who supported me, the ones that did. And this is, this seat is your seat. And I want to make sure I'm the best representative, uh, to you. I am extremely excited. You know, right now, we are in a pivotal time right now as we go from 28 to 14, uh, a time that we've never seen before in the city of St. Louis. I'm excited, I'm nervous. Um, to my new members, uh, that I came in with, as I call us the Fab Four, um, I am, uh, you guys give me so much energy and, uh, encourage me, uh, to figure out what can we do to make this city great. You know, um, the labels or whatever we get tagged with, I know that we care about our community. That's why we ran for office. We care about the future of the city. That's why we decided to run for office. You were elected by the people and the people has made a decision that they want us to lead. And I look forward to working with the Fab Four to figure out how we move this city forward. And to existing members that has been here, uh, has laid great foundation, uh, for the future of the city of St. of the city of St. Louis. I look forward to working with you all, learning from you all. So many of y'all come with different experiences, different walks of life, but a wealth of knowledge that I want to make sure I tap into, because at the end of the day, as quick as you get here, as quick as you could be gone, I want to be able to work with each and every one of the Board of Aldermen members to move this city forward. I think the days of small change, the days of not being able to get anything done, as I look at the Board, the days of the WWE is over, and the days of, you know, being silenced is bullied, is done. And I look forward to working with everybody to move this Board forward. To the people of the Fourteenth Ward, I rise again in support of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Aldermen from the Fourteenth. I would be remiss if I don't say a couple of thanks before we gather over here for, media would like some photos of the whole new Board. But I do want to just give a quick thank you to my parents, who are watching this from New York today. They finally learned how to get YouTube up on the TV, so yay, Mom and Dad and technology. But I really want to thank them for the type of person that they raised me to be. I come from a family of educators. I come from a family of labor. My mom was President of the Teachers Union at the district where she taught when I was growing up. And she taught me a lot about perseverance, being in that role. I mean, I remember being in middle school, and my mom, as a high school English teacher, was trying to teach The Handmaid's Tale. And there were a couple parents who did not like her teaching that book. And they made a complaint, and they brought her in front of the, the school board and tried to get her terminated for teaching a book that is, you know, twenty years later under attack again, along with a plethora of other books. And I watched my mom go through that. I watched her, you know, going through her public face, where she stoically stood up there and took the adversity on the chin and just kept going for the benefit of her kids and her students. And I saw the woman at home who was crushed by what she was seeing and the impact that it was having on her soul. My mom always gave me a word of advice growing up. She said, "Whenever you see a need, fill it." And that has been my mantra for life. I chose the life of service even before being elected an Alderperson, because that is what I have just always done since I was a little kid. I don't know any other way than to serve. And I look forward to this new Board of Aldermen, where we all get to serve together. We have a decision to make as a Board. Do we want to move forward, or do we want to keep looking backwards? And I think we are at a place where the residents in this city want us to look forward. You know, campaigns can be brutal, they can make you bruised and dirty, and, but we got to get ourselves dusted off, right? You know, as the Alderman from the Fourteenth said, there are times where, you know, he did not support me, but we got through it with professionalism, with kindness, with a commitment to community at the end of the day, because that is why we are all here, is to better our communities. And we may have differences in viewpoints and opinions on how we get there, but the fact of the matter is, our residents are counting on us to put together or put aside any personal differences in order to move transformational legislation for the benefit of residents in our city. And we owe that to our residents. So I look forward to the next two years with this body. I look forward to the possibility that we all bring when we work together. I look forward to the change that our city desperately needs, so that we are no longer known nationally for all of our problems, but are rather known nationally for all of our solutions. And I look forward to residents in this city understanding us as a legislative policymaking body, that if we continue down the path of wards being fiefdoms and we continue down the path of not having comprehensive citywide policies, we will continue to fall behind. And so I look forward to all of the potential that exists in this room, because there is so much. We have so many people who are firsts, who are sitting in front of us today. You know, we elected our first Latina to the Board. We have a Board of Aldermen that represents the demographics of our city, finally. One that recognizes that our diversity in both age and gender and race and ethnicity makes us stronger and more powerful as a community. And so I'm excited that all of those voices are represented here, and I am excited for everything that is to come. So at this point, I won't go on much longer. We have a little bit of business to get to today, and I know it's taken a long time to get through our much-needed thank yous to all the folks that supported us to get here today. But at this time, I would like to ask if all the new members would please come up on the stairs here. We have a couple of press who would like to get pictures of the new Board, and then we will commence with the meeting. All right, we will dispense with line item five, Report of City Officials.
Report of City Officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the Aldermen's mailboxes.
Petitions and Communications.
We have none.
Board Bills for Perfection, or Informal Calendar.
We have none.
First Reading of Board Bills.
We have none.
Reference to Committee of Board Bills.
We have none.
Second Reading and Report of Standing Committees.
We have none.
Report of Special Committees.
We have none.
Perfection Consent Calendar.
We have none.
Board Bills for Perfection.
We have none.
Third Reading Consent Calendar.
We have none.
Third Reading Report of Engrossment and Final Passage.
We have none.
Courtesy Resolutions Consent Calendar.
We have none.
Right, then, please dispense with line items seven through nineteen. First Reading of Resolutions.
Resolution One, introduced by, I'm sorry, President Green and Alderman Kohn, Board of Aldermen Rules.
Alderman from the Third, you are recognized on Resolution One.
Still getting used to the numbers myself. Thank you, everyone. Resolution number one is for passage of the rules for the 2023-2024 Legislative Session. This is a work product that has been many weeks in the making, many months, in fact. And the President's Office has been meeting with Alders over the course of the last two to three weeks, getting input, incorporating that feedback into the new rules. So everyone was really brought to the table to encourage the development of these rules for our new fourteen-member body. This is a really historic moment, as it's been noted many times today, throughout the morning and this afternoon. And with that change, you know, we need to kind of modernize our rules as well. The old rules, for those of you that might not be familiar, had bits and pieces from various documents over the years, and the miscellaneous section got rather long, because I think people were probably tired of making up new numbers and shuffling things around. The fourteen-member body, we needed to redefine, obviously, what constitutes a quorum. We needed a clear prohibition on legislating while driving. We're trying to make this more adaptive for contemporary times, with being able to have meetings virtually and rules around those meetings when we do meet virtually. This really does move the process towards a more democratized Board here at the Board of Aldermen. You know, shifting the officers of the Board, which have historically been done through seniority to an elective process, elevating officers to have more responsibility down here at the Board of Aldermen as well. And often, you know, modernizing it so that we have new approaches to public engagement and making sure that we're moving forward digitally as well. We are in the process of updating systems for both the chambers and the Kennedy Room, and then also having the opportunity to have committee hearings still virtually here and rules that go along with them.
Did you want to make a motion, Alderman?
With that, I would make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number One.
You need to request unanimous consent.
Or, I'm sorry, I request unanimous consent for Resolution Number One.
There's been an objection to unanimous consent. Would you like to suspend the rules for purposes of adopting today?
We don't have any rules to suspend.
We operate off of the previous rules until these rules have been passed.
Don't have any rules to suspend. And I have an inquiry.
So I would make a motion to suspend the rules for the purposes of adoption of Resolution Number One.
Objection. Please state your objection.
I'm objecting to suspending the rules.
Okay, we are, we are still using the 2022-2023 rules.
And I can object to suspending the rules. That's part of the rules. You should read them sometime.
Your, your-
I can object to suspending the rules. Now, the Alderman from the Twenty-Fifth already knows that, should know that.
There is a motion that is already on the table, and we are using the rules, the previous rules.
And I'm objecting, and the previous rules allow you to object to suspending the rules. And when you do object, and if that doesn't pass, it gets sent to committee. So I'm sorry that I have to teach, but this is a proper objection.
The Alderman from the Third still has the floor.
And I object to suspending the rules.
So suspension of the rules allows for the vote to suspend the rules?
Correct. Rule number seventy-six. So with that-
And I have, I want to speak to why we should not.
Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you very much. If the Alderman from... I'm sorry, I don't know your ward anymore. Third. Okay, if the Alderman from the Third would yield?
Yes.
Okay, Alderman, and it may be that we'll talk about it when we actually get to the rules. So I heard you talk about that there have been these meetings about that we had to update the rules. Nope, that's incorrect on my part. I cannot speak to that until we do the suspension of the rules. So I'll just wait, because I'm incorrect at this point, okay? I'll just wait and vote. I want a roll call, because I'm going to vote no. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the suspension of the rules? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll? Hold on, I don't think that there was a second. All right. It's been moved by the Alderman from the Third, second, and by the Alderwoman from the First. I will get used to all these new ward numbers, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of passing Resolution One today. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Zweizer? Alderman Oldenburg? Alderman Kohn? Alderman Orion? Alderman Ballmer? Alderwoman Vasquez? Alderwoman Sonier? Alderwoman Spencer? Alderman Browning? Alderwoman Clark Hubbard? Alderwoman Keys? Alderwoman Tyus? Alderwoman Boyd? Alderman Aldridge? President Green?
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd? Twelve a votes and three no votes.
By your vote, you suspend the rules to, for the purposes of adopting Resolution One. Alderwoman, or Alderman from the Third, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, the rules before us modernize our process down here at the Board of Aldermen, democratize our leadership down here at the Board of Aldermen, and make our processes a little bit more clearer throughout the new rule document here, and would renew my motion or make the motion that we adopt the Resolution Number One for the rules of the 2023-2024 Legislative Session.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the First.
Oh, if the Alderman from the Third would yield.
Oh, sorry. From the Twelfth. It's going to take me a while. I'm so used to calling you the First forever.
Louis Reed, I'm sorry, former President Reed called me the Twentieth for about the first year I was back. I'm okay with that. That's fine with me.
Right. Alderwoman from the Twelfth, you may proceed.
If the Alderman from the Third would yield?
Yes.
Okay, so you said we had to democratize and update our rules about seniority and leadership. Can you tell me what is democratize and update our rules about seniority and leadership? Because we always could elect, and I have stood on this floor many times and said that Because we always could elect, and I have stood on this floor many times and said that we did not have to have Joe Rody be our vice president, that we could have elected a vice president that was not somebody because of seniority. So what did we update to change?
Well, Alderwoman, actually underneath rule two, and the old rules, it states that the vice president and floor leader and the definitions thereof are determined by seniority.
No, it doesn't. We can, we can elect them. It's been saying that, and I've been telling you that.
We... So at the previous caucuses that we've had, this was an item that had brought, I actually was one of the sponsors of the amendment to our previous rules that never passed that would allow for us to elect our leadership. Obviously, historically, that was determined by seniority. And so this actually memorializes the process for determining the leadership of the board for the vice president, floor leader, and assistant floor leader positions. Part of that was also so it would be elected by the body, and then there was feedback regarding people in those positions should have served for two years. That was incorporated into the rules as well, but this memorializes specifically in our rules that we're allowed to, as a body, elect our leadership.
And so I will pull out the rules. We always could have elected our body, vice president, and other officers, and it's even in the charter, by election. So that, I don't have any problem with that, because that's what we've had before. What I want to know is, how does that impact people who, like North St. Louis? We've worked all our life. I've come back here twice because I was cheated, and now we're going to change how we do seniority. So how does that impact North St. Louis? Because we only have three people, four people, really, from North St. Louis, because that fifth ward and half of each of the other two wards are really more central corridor or downtown. How does that affect North St. Louis? Because usually what happens, and I want you to know this, is when black people get in a place to be in charge of things, that's when rules get changed. So how does that affect our seniority? We don't have a right to that anymore. Is that correct?
I would not say that's correct, because at the end of the day, it would be determined by a vote of the body.
I said we do not have a right, so that is either, a right is you don't have a vote. A right is that I have a right to vote.
You have a right to vote on the leadership.
No, that is not a right. A right is that I have a right to vote, and nobody can decide if I have a right to vote. Can somebody decide if I have seniority or not?
Via our rules, we can define what seniority is and vote upon that as a body.
And so by our rules, then, we in North St. Louis, who have waited for all these years now, don't have a right to have seniority anymore. Is that correct?
There's a separate section in the rules that defines seniority, Alderwoman, and seniority is still at a place in the new rules.
And what is that?
It's just not with respect to the leadership of the board.
Okay. But in the leadership of the board, and I'm going to show you, we always could, so I don't have a problem with that. We always could, and if you ever go, we can go back and look at how I talked about Joe Rody should not be the vice president of the board, and we could elect another one. And he got scared one time, because we actually almost had enough votes for him not to be the vice president, so that was always part of the rules. What I want to know is, how does, how in this set of rules is seniority being affected, and how is it affecting people in North St. Louis? Because literally, Alderwoman from the thirteenth, myself from the twelfth, and the tenth, and we are the most senior black people now that's from North St. Louis, because other people are new people. So how does that, is, how is that determined? And how is that determined about committees? Because I also heard that the Alderwoman from the thirteenth and I were not supposed to be able to serve on committees together. So that's going to be interesting.
So underneath the new rules, the, if they're adopted, again, we all have to vote on them, and then, once the vote takes place, then the leadership would be confirmed later this meeting. Anyone can nominate themselves or another for a leadership role, and then we would take a vote on that. And so, you know, in terms of any one individual from North St. Louis, South St. Louis, you know, the central corridor nominating themselves, if they have the votes to do it, then they, you know, certainly can nominate themselves.
And what does that mean? And so that's for leadership. So now I'm asking you, what does that mean for seniority for committees?
So senior, well, with the new rules, the committees would be, chairs of committees would be determined by the leadership that's elected by the body.
That's right.
And then the assignment of chairs would be determined...
So what you're telling me is this is racist. This is a way, so when we, and this is what happens to black people, when they run and they get in a spot, and this is why they wanted to go to fourteen wards in the first place, and why we knew that this was not a good idea, how it was going to affect North St. Louis, and now here you are coming with this thing, not that you have served your time and you've waited all this time, now we're going to change it and the leadership can decide. That's a bunch of racist bull. This is what I'm telling you. And you can look in all the redistricting and all the things about how white people take power away from black people when they get to a certain spot, and this is what they do. They elect the sheriff, and then all of a sudden, the sheriff can't sign a certain paper. This is how you disenfranchise a set of people. So the leadership telling who should be in on committees is a bunch of bull. It's racist. Why don't we, why wouldn't we just leave it at the people who have come through here? We have nobody but three people who could be committee chairs. So what you're doing is making white people be in charge of what the black people have already told you in North St. Louis, which is, these are our leaders in North St. Louis, not you. So when you can decide then that we don't get to be chairs, that's ridiculous. That is a racist, ridiculous thing that needs to be taken out of this thing. If you have served, like I have, for twenty-three years, and would have been thirty-three, and I've been, I have a wealth of knowledge, and I've waited my turn, and I came back here and worked myself back up to a term, for then you to say that this is a good thing is a bunch of bull. For people who always talk about inclusion, it is always interesting to me that you don't want to be inclusive. That doesn't hurt anybody. All these new people, it only affects senior, older, black alderpeople that you don't want to have a say in things. And that is not correct, and that's the kind of autocratic bull that makes people feel marginalized. Now, our community have had millions of dollars stolen from them over the years, and then now you would try to steal their seniority. They have gone to the polls each time, and they were with me when I came back here, and now you're saying that we're going to put a leadership in charge, and then they're going to decide. I wouldn't want to be part of that leadership. Anyway, I want the seniority to stay. The exact same thing is that, and it doesn't, it shouldn't be continuous, but if it is, it sure is better than what you're doing now, because you're trying to slip something by here and control. If Alderwoman Boyd, myself, and Alderwoman Clark Hubbard can be committee chairs, well, we have served our time. So you should exempt it out. If you all think that's a great thing, make it for all you people who live in South St. Louis. But for us people who live in North St. Louis, that is not a good deal. How does that? Why would you have to be able to tell me and my community about my seniority when they have already done it for twenty-three years? You or anybody else? The president? All this time, we've had these rules, and now you're trying to say, these rules, oh, they're so outdated. Know what it is, is that you're trying to control things. You're trying not to be fair. These are not outdated. This is so you can do all the things that you did, like when I told you guys about Proposition D being a bunch of junk, and that it would make people have bad outcomes, which it did. I wrote all about how you could have people get sixty, fifty-five percent, and then the person would still have to run an election again. In September, we wasted a couple of hundred thousand dollars to run a race, and now you're trying to strip seniority from North St. Louis, and that is not okay, and that is racist. And I'm going to get up every day and talk about, every time we have a meeting, if we pass this thing, I'm going to talk about it. I'm going to bring the rules for it. It is not okay, and it's something that you all think are trying to trick us into thinking this is good, because you've got some black faces that you think can vote for it, and that that will be all right. That is not all right to strip seniority from North St. Louis when the people have voted all these many times. If, if your election is so important, and the presidency election is so important, so are the people in my community who have voted all these many times, and I've been elected longer than you and the president and anybody in here who would be making that decision.
Are you done inquiring of the Alderman of the third?
I'm waiting, I'm waiting for him to explain to me how that helps.
That wasn't a question, Alderwoman.
Well, how does that help the people in North St. Louis?
Alderwoman, anyone in this body can run for a leadership position.
That is not my, that is not my question.
And then the leadership...
That is not my question.
Yes, it is answering your question, Alderwoman.
That is not my question.
That is my answer to your question, Alderwoman.
That is not my question, and you can keep saying...
That is my answer to your question.
How is changing?
That is my answer to your question.
How is changing seniority?
One at a time.
How is changing the seniority helping the people in North St. Louis have some power at this board?
Anyone in this chamber can run for leadership if they choose to do so.
And again.
Also, seniority in rule seventeen remains the same as it was defined in our own, our old rules.
Which is what?
So it's based off of continuous seniority as follows. The Alderman with the greatest seniority shall choose first, followed by the Alderman with the next greatest seniority, and so on, until all Aldermen have been polled.
But I thought you told me that, it says in there that the leadership gets to pick who gets to be the chairs.
That's correct.
Then that is not the same as what our rules were.
Alderwoman, I've explained it. I've answered your question.
So, no, what I'm saying, it is not the same as what our rules are, because if you now get...
The definition of seniority is the same as it was...
The definition of seniority means nothing, if then you can then be autocratic and decide what is the best for North St. Louis. So the people who vote in North St. Louis, it doesn't matter, is what you're telling me.
It's not autocratic when you're elected.
It is autocratic. It is autocratic, because you change them whenever black people get in charge of things, and you're trying to cover it up, and it's not going to be covered up, and we're going to pull out all the rules and show that it's not the same, and you're taking power, and if you put somebody else in there and say, look, we made that, that is not the same. That is to dismiss the people who have voted over these years, and it's the same thing they did when they came up with rules about, you got to be able to say who all the senators were, when they had all these rules about if you could vote or not. You're doing the same thing, and it's a bunch of bull. And I know you've been pushing this for the longest, and then saying, I hope you don't think I'm racist. Yeah, I do. This is racist. This is, there is no reason not to leave them in place. You still got way more Caucasians, because we don't have as many senior Aldermen, because we lost all of them, but us three. So what you're doing is just doing worse to a community that's already been treated badly, and you ought to be ashamed of yourself. You ought to be ashamed. So there's no way, if Pam Boyd, just because she gets reelected, or Sharon Tyus, that we can be a chair of a committee, that you guys are going to pick that, because our great white forefathers, because I'm sure you already cut your deal for that, is going to tell us if we should be in charge of a committee or not, and that is not all right. And then to say we all the same. These people are new, don't even know where the restroom is hardly, so, but you're going to get them to vote for that. You ought to be ashamed of yourself, and I, and expect me. If my seniority gets taken away again, expect me, because this is cheating.
Alderman from the third, you are recognized.
I renew my motion.
Any further discussion?
Roll call.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the third, seconded by the Alderwoman from the first, that we adopt resolution number one. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer? Alderman Odenberg? Alderman Kohn? Alderman Orion? Alderman Ballmer? Alderwoman Valsquez? Velasquez? Alderwoman Sonier? Soniers? Alderwoman Spencer? Alderman Browning? Alderwoman Clark Hubbard? Alderwoman Keys? Alderwoman Tyus?
No.
Alderwoman Boyd? Alderman Aldridge? President Green?
Aye.
I have ten ayes, four noes, one ayes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion to adopt resolution number one. Resolution number two.
Resolution number two. Introduced by Alder, I'm sorry, President Green and Alderman Browning, the hiring of staff.
Alderman from the ninth, you are recognized on the first reading of resolution number two.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the board. I request unanimous consent on resolution number two.
There has been an objection to unanimous consent. Would you like to make a motion to suspend the rules?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules in order to pass resolution two.
Is there any discussion on the motion to suspend the, is there a second on that motion? Sorry, I couldn't... Seconded by the Alderman from the third. Is there any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer? Alderman Odenberg? Alderman Kohn? Alderman Orion? Alderman Ballmer? Alderwoman Valsquez? Valsquez? Sonier? Sonier. Alderwoman Spencer? Alderman Browning? Alderwoman Clark Hubbard? Alderwoman Keys? Alderwoman Tyus? Alderwoman Boyd? Alderman Aldridge? President Green?
Aye.
Alderman Kohn? Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
I have fourteen ayes, one no vote.
By your vote, you sustain the motion to suspend the rules. Alderman from the ninth, you may proceed.
I move for the adoption of resolution two.
It's been moved by the Alderman from... What question are you trying to divide? So you want to do each and every staff person individually? All right. All right, first up, does he have a copy? Okay. Alderman from the ninth, you are recognized.
I'd like to make the motion to nominate Terry Kennedy for the position, to hire Terry Kennedy for the position of clerk.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the ninth, seconded by the Alderman from the fourth, that we approve Terry Kennedy as our clerk. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, I moved to hire Sharita Rogers as the position of assistant clerk.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the ninth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the tenth, that we hire Sharita Rogers as assistant clerk. Any discussion? You've got an objection, Sharita. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, I move to hire Tracy Billups as associate clerk.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the ninth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the fourteenth, that we hire Tracy Billups as associate clerk. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move to nominate, or to hire Tracy Billups for the position, or sorry, Ora Higgs. Thank you. Ora Higgs for the position of associate clerk.
It has been moved by the Alderman from the ninth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the seventh, that we hire Ora Higgs as the associate clerk. Any discussion? All those in favor, oh, discussion? Alderwoman from the eleventh?
I just wanted to say that I am so happy that we have such women of such high caliber working for our citizens here at the Board of Aldermen, and I just want to say thank you. I love y'all.
Any further discussion? It's been moved by the alderman from the ninth, seconded by the alderwoman from the seventh that we hire Ora Higgs as associate clerk. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
None to hire, move to hire Tina Johnson as executive secretary.
It's been moved by the alderman from the ninth, seconded by the alderman from the fourth that we hire Tina Johnson as executive secretary. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move to hire Teresa Chambers as executive secretary.
It's been moved by the alderman from the ninth, seconded by the alderman from the fourth that we hire Teresa Chambers as executive secretary. Is there any discussion?
Can we correct that to Teresa Ernst? So make a motion to hire Teresa Ernst as executive secretary.
Okay. We have a renewed second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move to hire Janice Muhammad Key as executive secretary.
It's been moved by the alder, uh, alderman from the ninth, seconded by the alderman from the fourteenth that we hire Janice Muhammad Key as executive secretary. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move to hire Lamisha Bird as executive secretary.
It's been moved by the alderman from the ninth, seconded by the alderman from the fourteenth that we hire Lamisha Bird as executive secretary. Any discussion? Although, oh, alderwoman from the eleventh?
Just me again. So Lamisha has served as, as my secretary when I was the twenty-first ward alderwoman. And she is just fantastic along with the other fantastic staff we have here today. So once again, I just wanted to tell them that I love you and thank you so much. And, and when it comes to Lamisha, she's the best, but they are all the best. So yes, 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 on Lamisha.
Any further discussion? It's been moved by the alderman from the ninth, seconded by the alderman from the fourteenth that we hire Lamisha Bird as executive secretary. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move to hire Garrett Allen as executive secretary.
It's been moved by the alderman from the ninth, seconded by the alderman from the fourth that we hire Garrett Allen as executive secretary. Is there any discussion? Alderwoman from the first?
Um, oh, we got a new piece of paper because this one-
Or alderwoman from the twelfth.
It doesn't matter. I know who you're talking to. That's one thing I'm not going to raise heck about because it takes a minute. Okay, so we got an update. I'm sorry. I was looking at the old one.
Okay. Any further discussion? It's been moved by the alderman from the ninth, seconded by the alderman from the fourteenth that, or sorry, the fourth, that we hire Garrett Allen as executive secretary. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move to hire Louis Galley Jr. as legal counsel.
It's been moved by the alderman from the ninth, seconded by the alderman from the fourth that we hire Louis Galley Jr. as legal counsel for the board. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move to hire Chanel White as administrative secretary to the clerk.
It's been moved by the alderman from the ninth, seconded by the alderman from the fourteenth that we hire Chanel White as administrative secretary to the clerk. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move to approve the hiring of two positions for executive secretary that are currently vacant.
It's been moved by the alderman from the ninth, seconded by the alderman from the fourth that we hire two positions for executive secretary that are currently vacant. Is there any discussion? Alderwoman from the twelfth?
Um, why are we moving now? I thought we already okayed that to hire them. Are we just doing this as a precaution to start all over again?
Correct, since it's a new session.
All right.
Alderman from the fifth?
Yes, who is this Mr. Vacant and why is he available for eight positions?
I don't know. He's very talented individual. Any further discussion? It's been moved by the alderman from the ninth, seconded by the alderman from the fourteenth that we hire, um, two executive secretary positions. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move to hire, to approve the hire of, uh, an administrative assistant which is currently vacant.
It's been moved by the alderman from the ninth, seconded by the alderman from the fourth that we hire an administrative assistant. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move to hire a receptionist slash typist, uh, which is a currently vacant position.
It's been moved by the alderman from the ninth, seconded by the alderman from the fourth that we hire a receptionist slash typist. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I move to hire an administrative aide slash sergeant at arms, which is a currently vacant position.
It's been moved by the alderman from the ninth, seconded by the alderman from the fourteenth that we hire an administrative aide slash sergeant of arms. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I move to hire a legislative researcher, two positions of a legislative researcher which is currently vacant.
It's been moved by the alderman from the ninth, seconded by the alderman from the fourth that we hire two legislative researcher positions. Is there any discussion? Alderwoman from the fourth? Or twelfth?
Twentieth, first, twelve. I'm so confused. So I understand if you're confused because I'm confused, okay? Um, I was, no, I was standing because I had a question about the, uh, sergeant at arms, but I'll just ask it later. I have another question about the recorder archivist, so I'll wait.
Okay. Any further discussion on the legislative researcher? Seeing none, it's been moved by the alderman from the ninth, seconded by the alderman from the fourth that we hire two legislative researchers. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that we hire a recorder slash archivist, which is currently a vacant position.
It's been moved by the alderman from the ninth, seconded by the aldermen from the fourth that we hire a recorder slash archivist. Is there any discussion? Alderwoman from the twelfth?
I'm trying to undetermine is, I know, is that a person that's going to be making the copies and archive and all our history? Is that also the person who's going to make our copies for us at the board? Is that a different position?
That's, the executive secretaries will do that.
Forever, or are we going to get somebody to do that?
If we hire, uh, an administrative aide sergeant at arms, that's what they would be doing.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
It's been moved by the alderman from the ninth, seconded by the alderman from the fourth that we hire recorder archivist. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that we hire an IT aide, which is currently a vacant position.
It's been moved by the alderman from the ninth, seconded by the alderman from the fourth that we hire an IT aide. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that we hire Ryan Coleman for the position of financial analyst.
It's been moved by the alderman from the ninth, seconded by the alderman from the fourth that we hire Ryan Coleman as a financial analyst. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that we hire fourteen positions for the administrative assistant to the alderman, which is currently, which are all currently vacant.
It's been moved by the alderman from the ninth, seconded by the alderman from the fourth that we hire fourteen administrative assistants to the aldermen. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify, oh. Alderwoman from the eleventh?
President. So, these fourteen, they are of the choosing of the alderperson per ward, is that correct?
So, yes, so, um, people will apply to, I, my understanding is as of yesterday, the application is up on the city website, and there is a different, different application for each alderperson. So person can apply directly to the alderperson that they wish to be hired by.
Thank you.
Alderwoman from the tenth?
Thank you, Madam President, uh, members of the board. I have an additional question to that because that was a misunderstanding of mine. So what you're saying is, it still isn't just an, just for clarity and for people that are watching, it still isn't just an alderperson can say, "I want this person to be that." They still have to apply to the city of St. Louis, right? Can you speak a little bit about that so that there's no misunderstanding? Or if you can't, I can just ask questions. So they still have to go through the personnel department and apply?
No.
They apply to the city of St. Louis.
They, yes, they submit the resi, or their application the same way they would for any other position in the Board of Aldermen.
And as many people can submit their applications as they want to.
Correct.
Not just you appointing somebody.
Correct.
And then they go through the personnel committee for the Board of Aldermen? They get hired by, technically hired by the city of St. Louis.
By the individual alderperson.
By the alderperson through the city of St. Louis.
Correct.
Okay.
Through the, yes.
Through the personnel.
So they'll all get approved through the personnel committee, but-
That was the piece I want to make sure we're clear on.
But the, the, the goal or the idea is that the resumes that are, come in to say that I want to, you know, they're interested in working under you, all those go to you, you pick who you want.
Okay. But there is some clearance that has to go through the personnel department first.
Correct, yes.
Okay, we want to make sure because I don't want to misunderstand and thank you so much.
Yep. All right. With that, that concludes all of, or, no, we didn't vote on that, sorry. So it was moved by the alderman from the ninth, seconded by the alderman from the fourth that we hire fourteen administrative assistants to the aldermen. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Number Three, introduced by President Green and Alderman Aldridge, printing of the journal.
Alderman from the fourteenth, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I request unanimous consent for Resolution Number Three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, did we hear, have an objection? There's been an objection to unanimous consent. Alderman from the fourteenth, would you like to make a motion to suspend the rules for the purposes of, uh, adopting Resolution Three today?
Thank you, Madam President. I move to make a motion to suspend the rules for adoption of Resolution Number Three.
Second.
It's been moved by the alderman from the fourteenth, seconded by the alderman from the third that we suspend the rules for the purposes of adopting Resolution Number Three. Is there any discussion on the suspension of the rules? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer?
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Cone?
Aye.
Alderman Orion?
Aye.
Alderman Bomber?
Aye.
Alderwoman Velasquez? Alderwoman Sonier?
Aye.
Alderman, I'm sorry, Alderwoman Spencer? Alderman Browning?
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys? Alderwoman Tyus? Alderwoman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Aldridge?
Aye.
President Green?
Aye.
Fourteen aye votes and one voted present.
By your vote, you sustain the motion to suspend the rules for the purposes of adopting Resolution Number Three. Alderman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number Three.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by the alderman from the fourteenth, seconded by the alderman from the third that we adopt Resolution Number Three. Is there any discussion? Alderwoman from the twelfth?
If, members of the board, um, if, I know the, the sponsor cannot answer, but if the alderman from the third would answer this question, because he's kind of new here and I don't want him to be put on the-
I'll take it.
Okay, I want to talk about how we've been printing these jour, will you yield, Alderman from the fourteenth?
I do, Alderwoman from the twelfth.
Okay, thank you very much. And do you know anything about the journals that are printed?
I do. On the state level, we have a journal that is recorded, um, every day that talks about what took place that day, what votes happened, and how people voted.
And then are, um, and are they printed out?
They are put online on the state level.
And that's why I'm rising because that's the problem that I have is that we actually print these journals out, which they go just like that most times, okay? And so, I'm hoping that at this point, that we might do something like the state does instead of printing up all kinds of paper, that we would go to printing the journals online instead of actually printing them with paper.
I like that idea. I agree with you.
Would you like to make an amendment to?
I'd like- Charter says we have to print them?
Yeah, the charter says we have to print them.
That is, but everybody doesn't, so, they let us stop getting them at some point. So if we have to print them, maybe we could have Alderman opt out not to get them because we're just wasting a lot of paper and resources. So maybe we make a form that says, "I don't want to get this and print it, and I can just read it online." Just as a suggestion.
We'll make a note of that. Thank you, Alderwoman.
Thank you, Alderwoman.
Oh, thank you. I have no further inquiries. Thank you.
Right. Any further discussion? It's been moved by the alderman from the fourteenth, uh, seconded by the alderman from the third that we adopt Resolution Number Three. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Number Four, introduced by President Green and Alderman Cone, Aldermanic and mailing expenses.
Alderman from the third, you are recognized on Resolution Number Four.
That's, that's me. I would like to, uh, request unanimous consent for Resolution Number Four.
It's been moved by the alderman from the third, seconded by the alderman from the fourteenth. Requested.
Unanimous consent?
Yes. Did you request unanimous consent? Okay. There's no objections, hearing no objections. Alderman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. Resolution Number Four is the approval of the, uh, ever, ever discussed, uh, expense account and, uh, stamps per, uh, each alderperson. This resolution approves the expense, uh, of five thousand annually, the expense, uh, excuse me, expense accounts of five thousand annually, and the mailing expense is the equivalent of two hundred stamps per month, or twelve, or twenty-four hundred stamps per year for each alderperson.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the twelfth?
I, I couldn't hear you. You're saying it's the equivalent of two hundred stamps per, so we're keeping the same amount of stamps we got?
So, we're working-
We got to change the charter, is that it? Because we get double the people?
It's, right.
It's going through the budget right now.
I'm sorry, I didn't properly do what I was supposed to. If the alderman from the third would inquire, I'm sorry.
I will yield to questions.
Okay. So, um, I was, my question was, we're only going to get two hundred stamps when we are getting double the people?
So for the next few months, yes. And then once we go through the budget cycle, the, uh, idea is to approve additional stamps. And the president's office is actually currently working, um, with, uh, I believe it's MultiGraph on a postage budget that won't require the actual physical stamps any longer. But that will be done through a separate motion. But currently, our budget only has, uh, two hundred stamps per month, twenty-four hundred stamps per year. But obviously, that'll get revised once, uh, once we have that-
Well, I feel obliged, uh, for those who are not here, if you watch Cooley High, to bring up that we want, need to at least have a debate about stamps for the next two hours so that we feel comfortable about what should happen with a stamp, with a meter or whatever, but I'm going to pass that by and say, "Okay," and then I'm going to ask.
I'll do you one better, Alderwoman, we'll be able to have two discussions about stamps this session.
And then the next thing, what was the, the amount of money? Was that in this?
The expense account.
Expense account, thank you.
Five thousand annually per.
So, we were able to double that?
Not double, because it was forty-two hundred previously.
And so, are we going to double that or not?
That would be a discussion for this body as to whether or not we do, and it certainly would have to go through the budget process as well.
How did we come from forty-two to five thousand, do you know?
I don't, I, I believe that was discussion in Personnel, you know, previously, as we were kind of wrapping through the consolidation of the wards.
So, I just want to put out there, I think she has something to tell you.
I unfortunately can't read lips.
Is there something we need to know, maybe?
Okay, so, some of us have not only doubled the people or more, we also have large, large communities that we represent that doesn't just include constituents, but also lots of businesses and things like that. In fact, my ward is now triple the size that it used to be, because I used to always have a compact contiguous ward, and now I have a monster. So, I'm going to vote present on this, not that we don't need it, but I don't think this is enough. If we're going to double everything, everything ought to double. We ought to get double stamps and we ought to get double the amount of expense account because we have to do a lot more, so I'm a present on this.
Any further discussion? Just to clarify, the five thousand was in the pay bill that we passed to increase it, and we have requested through the budget cycle enough for every alderperson to be able to mail every household in their ward on an annual basis. And so, as long as that stays in the budget, you will have much more than two hundred stamps per month.
What about?
So, we.
So, since I, I'll do the inquiry to you, if you will answer, Madam President, what about the expense account?
We can look at that through the budget process too, and if we want to adjust that, we can adjust that.
Thank you.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved by the Alderman from the 3rd, seconded by the Alderman from the 14th, that we adopt resolution number four. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, second reading of resolutions.
We have none.
Please dispense with line item number 21 then, miscellaneous and unfinished business.
Nomination and election of officers.
Right, at this time, we will pursue it to the rules that just passed. We will begin the election of first Vice President, then Floor Leader, then Assistant Floor Leader. If anybody would like to make a nomination, Alderwoman from the 10th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I'm excited about this process that we're taking on today to elect our leadership. I think this is a step in the right way to build the morale and collaboration here on the floor. And I have actually myself walked around today and asked if any of the senior leaders on the floor that had not already expressed that they didn't want leadership positions, if they wanted one, because I'm in the middle, and we talked about that, about making sure that we respect seniority as well as work together collaboratively. So, with that being said, I would like to nominate Third Ward Alderman Shane Cohn as our Vice President.
So, it's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded, I think, by the Alderwoman from the 11th, that we elect Alderman Cohn as the Vice President of the Board. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, there is a request for roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer? Alderman Aldenberg? Alderman Cohn? Alderman Norrion? Alderman Valmer? Alderwoman Velasquez? Alderwoman Sonier? Alderwoman Spencer?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Thank you. Alderman Browning? Alderwoman Clark Hubbard? Alderwoman Keys? Alderwoman Tyus? Alderwoman Boyd? Alderman Aldrich? President Green?
Aye.
Alderman Cohn?
Aye.
Fourteen aye votes and one no vote.
By your vote, you sustain the motion, congratulations, Alderman from the 3rd. Alderwoman from the 7th.
I would like to nominate Alderwoman from the 10th Ward, Shamim, for Floor Leader.
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 7th, seconded by the Alderman from the 3rd, that we elect Alderwoman Clark Hubbard as our Floor Leader. Is there any discussion? Yes. Is there a second? What is your point of order?
So, there would be, there's a motion and a second already on the floor for one nomination. We would have to take a vote on that before.
We vote on the other, okay. Yes, Alderwoman from the 12th.
The nominations, because if you're going to have people nominate, you should be have as many so that everybody knows who the people are, not just take them one at a time like that. It ought to be, that second ought to be brought back, and we ought to have as many nominations as can be.
We can do that, we can take back the second, and, and then we can take all nominations. So, the second on that was the Alderman from the 3rd, can you withdraw your second?
I withdraw my second.
Right, so we have one nomination for Alder, the Alderwoman from the 10th. We have a second nomination for Alderman from the 5th. Are there any other nominations for Floor Leader? Seeing none? Okay, what we will do is we'll take a vote on, a roll call vote on these one at a time. So, first, we will do a roll call vote on, you want to do, I think, the 10th was nominated first, and so, I think we take it on the Alderwoman from the 10th, and then we'll take it on the Alder, and from the, the 5th. Okay. If either one of you would like to say a piece before.
I'm also happy to say more as a nominator as well, I didn't say much.
Right, if not, then.
I'm also happy to say more about my nomination.
Alderwoman from the 7th, you may proceed then.
Yes, I nominated Alderwoman Clark Hubbard because, you know, she's demonstrated exemplary, exemplary leadership. She, like she said today, she makes sure to go around and talk to everyone and communicate with everyone. When I was on the Board of Education, whenever I needed to, you know, get anything through the Board of Alderperson, Shamim was always more willing, like literally would be the person to help me get in touch with everyone. She passed some incredible legislation, like the universal basic income. She did the civilian oversight, things that folks in our communities are asking for. She's been a pioneer, but she stayed, you know, open-minded and stayed an advocate and open to conversation. And I think that's exactly the type of leadership that we need to see. And then obviously, we're talking about making sure that we have black leadership within the realms, and so I think that's important too.
Thank you, Alderwoman from the 12th.
So, we, no, we are not talking about having black leadership, you just got here. We're talking about black leadership that black people elected, not black leadership where it's all put in place, where we play this game.
Alderwoman, you have to ask to inquire of the Alderman?
I'm not, no, 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 I'm just addressing, I'm not asking her to say anything, I'm addressing. When she say "we," she's including me, we are not doing any such thing. We already had way for black people to elect their own black elected officials. This is exactly what I was talking about, this is a setup, that you sit here and do this, this is a exact setup to undermine and diminish North St. Louis. And Shamim Hubbard does not live in the North St. Louis across Page, but you're nominating her because that's what has happened to the North St. Louis all along, is that people who live north of Page have been diminished and marginalized. And so, when you do this, that's because you are one of those brown faces that are put in places.
I can respond.
I am, I am going to say that we have to practice a level of decorum in these chambers, and pursuant to the rules that we just passed, calling people names is no longer permitted in these chambers. So, I would just ask that when we are talking today, when we are speaking to each other, that we do so respectfully. We can have disagreements, but we don't need to do it in ways that are in violation of our rules. You need to state your actual point of order. To what rule is your point of order? Pursuant to what rule? Rule thirty-eight, which? Yes, so the President shall preserve decorum in meetings. Decorum is proper order, etiquette, and conduct of each person providing testimony, members of the public and alderpersons. Individuals shall not speak out of turn, use disparaging or abusive language, or make threats of violence against another person during a meeting. Members shall confine their remarks to the pending question under discussion and refrain from unnecessary repeating points. Members shall not be permitted to bring weapons into the offices or chambers of the Board of Aldermen. So, your point of order is not sustained, and I'm asking you, Alderwoman, to please take your seat. Please take your seat.
You know, Alderwoman Tyus, I, I understand that you're saying you didn't, you know, mean that as in an offensive way at all.
Alderwoman, you have to, you can't address somebody directly on the floor without asking them to, to inquire, so please direct your comments to the chair.
Okay, it doesn't matter, I'm trying to stay centered in the people of St. Louis and what we're here to do, and so in general, it doesn't need to be directed to anyone. Perhaps things weren't met offensively, but there were other comments today about being a black face put up by white leadership, which is offensive, because I'm a very proud black woman, there were other, you know, there's, I'm the blackest person here. That is also offensive, because who gets to define who's black and what the criteria is for that? And so, I'm not going to address that to anyone directly. What I will say is I will hold myself accountable to treating every single one of my colleagues respectfully, and I will not attempt to define myself as more or less or anything else than you, nor will I attempt to define who you are or how you identify. And so, I'll just, you know, leave it there.
Alderman from the 5th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, and the immortal words of LBJ to put this all to rest. If nominated, I will not run, if elected, I will not serve. I will happy to perform in my senior advisory capacity at any time to help this move along, thank you.
So, are you asking that your nomination be withdrawn?
That is correct, thank you. I've conferred with the new 10th Ward Alderman since I was the old 10th Ward Alderman, thank you.
Is there any further discussion, Alderwoman from the 11th?
My, my issue is that it appears that discussions had already been had before we came here this morning. I knew nothing about any discussion that had been had about these positions. I did not speak with, I'm sorry, what's your, your new number, Shamim? The 10th Ward, I had not spoken with the 10th Ward Alderwoman about this position or any of the other positions that were, or are going to be discussed or nominations here today. So, I fail to see the transparency, and I do have a problem with that.
Thank you, Alderwoman, is there any further discussion, Alderman from the 14th?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I guess to discuss where we are right now, I want to commend the new Alderwoman from the 7th Ward for nominating Alderwoman Shamim Clark. You know, as long as I've been knowing her from Committee Woman, even though I wasn't elected, just kind of watching her from afar, she's always as simplified leadership and, I mean, truly cares about her community. If you ever see her Facebook Lives, you know she stay in the ward, she cares about this board, she cares about the future of St. Louis. She is one of the people that I aspire to gain from, because I understand that she know how to work across the aisle, and as somebody who may be new to this board, it would be an honor to have the leadership of Alderwoman Clark as a Floor Leader. I think, especially for as new people, can be very supportive and helpful, and I would ask somebody to support her in this nomination, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderwoman from the 12th.
So, as to pick up again, calling people a brown girl is not an insult. Anybody who thinks it is, then they got a problem with brown girls. I've been on this floor for thirty-something years, encouraging little black girls, calling them black girl magic, and nobody's ever had a say. So, that is your interpretation, Madam President, because I call her a brown girl. And if you want to say that that is a negative remark, again, that reflects on who you are. And I understand you grew up in a community with not many black people, so you don't understand that brown girl is not a negative remark, okay? It is a positive remark for black girls to know that brown girls and black girls and people of different colors matter. And what we're being done, what's being done to North St. Louis today is marginalizing. And the reason why she's okay with it, Alderwoman from the 7th, is because she's from South St. Louis, and she's from near the central quarter. And so, again, what I said was going to happen is that you're leaving out the people who live north of Page, and I'm with Alderwoman Key, I'm sorry, Alderwoman from the new 11th, in that there was nothing talked to me, I just talked to Alderwoman from the 13th. Now, she did say something was to talk to her, someone talked to her about it, and she did not want to, but these two right here, we didn't hear, and we're the other people. So, this was all put in place to make it seem like it was okay and that you were being inclusive, when you're not being inclusive, and it does seem like a setup, because it is. And so, if we're going to do that things, then why don't you let the people who live north of Page make a, a, a recommendation, and you listen to them? Because what you're doing is what Frances Lay did and other people, which is marginalizing the people who live north of Page, and that is wrong. And for somebody who's talked about inclusion all these years, and who used to come down to this board and terrorize people, it is amazing to me now how you want everything to be covered and hushed up, and you're going to pick our leadership. So, why don't we have the people who are black in the Black Caucus pick the leadership for black people? Not have you all come with somebody, because you live in South St. Louis, no disrespect, but you don't live north of Page, okay? And I would rather have a white person who lived north of Page in my community and leadership than to leave out a whole group of people. And this has been happening for a long time, and you don't know about it because you haven't been down here. This has been a system that's been installed. So, you guys come down here and talk about newness, when in fact, you don't, and then people say, "Well, we need to go forward." That's what people tell black people when they've stolen all their land and money, when they come back and talk to reparations. So, this is what we are opposed to, that you're taking our seniority and making people decide who and what we get, and that we don't exist, and that is wrong. And black girl is not a derogatory, or brown girl is not derogatory, and I'm ashamed of you for thinking it is.
Alderwoman from the 10th.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I just want, for clarity, right, just to make sure, because I know people are watching. Alderwoman Keys, the only reason I didn't come talk to you the way I came and talk to the other senior members today about this and about these leadership positions was because per former Alderman of the 10th Ward, Valmer, he made the suggestion that you had had to have served two years down here at the board that was on our rules and that we had just voted for. That's the only reason I didn't come talk to you. But I did come talk to Alderwoman Boyd, Alderwoman Tyus, the only reason I didn't come talk to you was prior to me going around, you stated that you wasn't interested in any leadership roles. We, you did, ma'am, yes, you did, you, you, well, we can be, we, I mean, not that it's that serious to run the tape, but you did say that you, I heard you say it when we were standing, you said you weren't interested. Well, I'm sorry for misunderstanding that, because I was just going by what I heard you say. And so, that's the only reason. These discussions are being had right now, I, I mean, I don't, I don't want you to think there's anything nefarious, especially against you personally, because specifically, the only reason I didn't come ask you about a leadership role was because of the rule we voted on, again, per Valmer's recommendation that you had to have served two years down here. And then with that being said, I accept the nomination as a proud, brown, black, whatever. you want to call me woman, who serves proudly from the new ward that I serve in now and from the old ward that I had, that I know there's these lines that people use and move them back and forth. But hey, I'm a proud black woman, and I only came down here to advocate for my people and return resources to them, and that is what I do, and I do every day unapologetically, proudly, and uncompromised. So I appreciate the encouragement to be this floor leader, and I'm asking for the votes and the support. If I don't have it, y'all know me, I'm going to sit right there at that desk that I proudly served from, that my grandfather served from, and still be the same old lady that I am, and still serve the same way that I do. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the Eleven.
What, confused? Because I don't have two years of service. I was not interested in serving in those leadership positions, because I am but a novice, a humble novice at best. But I am still, you know, I'm asked to vote, and my concern is that when was I going to be brought into the loop? Why wasn't I brought into the loop? And so we, see, we constantly talk about transparency, but somehow the transparency missed me, and I don't know who else it missed. But what I'm advocating for, and Shamie, you know me and you don't have any problems, sister, okay? But I have a problem when I feel like I've been left out of the loop. Either I'm part of the group or I'm not. Am I part of the fourteen? Am I part of the fourteen?
Absolutely.
Okay, then if I'm part of the fourteen, then I need to be in the loop. Let's talk about transparency. All of these things have been done before I got here this morning. I got a problem with that, and our people should have a problem with that. So that's my issue. Thank you.
Need further discussion, Alderwoman from the Twelfth.
I will further say, I did not say I was not interested. I said I want to be part of the way they were doing it, and I don't want to be part of the way it's done. And the Alderwoman from the Eleventh has really clarified it. It's been a secretive process in which people have been left out. And then you said you talked to all the senior persons, which you did not, okay? So that is to try to cover up or to say that I've talked to everybody. And now again, I will say, when I talked to Alderwoman Boy, because I asked her, because I said, I haven't heard anything about it. She said, no. Talked to Alderwoman Key, I mean, I'm sorry, she said, yes, you had talked to her. Talked to Alderwoman Keys, she said, no. So that's the problem. This secretive, put the deal together, then try to act like, what are they talking about? There is no transparency. There is a deal that's been put together. You notice that, and I have helped Shamie, I'm sorry, Alderwoman Hubbard, not called her by her first name, in many of her ventures that she has done, but I do not like this kind of thing. It was done behind closed doors. It is not transparent. And so that is to, I want to ask if the Alderwoman from, what is your new ward? I'm sorry. If the Alderwoman from the Eighth would yield, please? So...
Alderwoman from the Eighth, or will you yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the Twelfth?
Yes. Alderwoman, were you inquired at any time about if you wanted to be in leadership, or were you talked to at all about leadership?
I, to be honest with you, you know...
And if I'm putting you on the spot, don't...
No, I mean, you know, I have to commend Alderwoman Keys for pointing out, I mean, you know, unless everybody from this body was consulted, there does have to be transparency down here, and I do think conversations should be inclusive. And if just one member of this body feels left out of the process, my heart is with that person. My heart is with all of us to be a collective body. I do commend Alderwoman Clark Hubbard for walking around, having some personal one-on-one conversations today. I think for our person-seeking leadership, that's a very important thing to do, and I commend you for doing that, and I thank you for having those conversations. But I do think that if we are leaving just one voice out, and then we have work to do.
So you don't want to answer my question, were you consulted?
I was not consulted.
Thank you very much. Let's see here, who is, oh, if the Alderman from, what is your fourth, would yield?
The Alderman from the Fourth yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the Twelfth.
Alderman, were you consulted about a position?
There was a, there was a discussion about it at the Rules Meeting that I went to with the President.
Were you, so you were consulted?
Yeah, that was part of the Rules Discussion.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Point of order, Madam President, excuse me, just to clarify, if the question was before today. So I just wanted to clarify, because there was some consultation, as I pointed out and commended earlier. There has been some discussion about leadership from various members of the Board. I don't want to say that there has been no conversations whatsoever, but as far as a formal or understanding who was going to be nominated and who was getting support, et cetera, that was not something that I was consulted on before today.
Okay, so...
In a formal, in a formal manner.
So I'm sorry, because she got back up. Is it all right if I further inquire from her?
Yes, if she will allow for questioning. Right. Madam President, yes, I will, I will...
And so I'm trying to understand this. So you were talked to at some point earlier about leadership, but not today, is that what you're saying?
Prior to today, there was some informal conversations. There was one informal conversation that I can remember regarding leadership.
Okay. And was that from someone other than the nominee?
It was an informal conversation amongst a group of Alderpersons, but in an informal manner.
Okay, thank you. Is Alderman Oldenburg still here?
No.
Okay. If the Alderman from the Third would yield?
The Alderman from the Third yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the Twelfth?
I will.
So Alderman from the Third, were you consulted about running for a position?
I had conversations, as did my colleague from the Tenth. And, you know, we've done our best to continue having conversations with colleagues that were coming down to the Board to ensure that we...
You had conversations, I'm sorry. So I can't see you, because she's standing, thank you very much. I'm sorry, so go ahead.
I was just saying, yes, we had conversations with colleagues and, you know, working in partnership with, you know, my colleague from the Tenth. You know, tried to engage as many people as we could to have conversations around our interest in leadership positions at the Board.
So you knew that your colleague from the Tenth was going to nominate you today?
I had conversations with her about it on the floor today, correct?
Before, before today or today?
Today.
So, but before that, you were talking to people about being nominated for leadership?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have to ask? Thank you. If the Alderwoman from the First would yield?
The Alderwoman from the First yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the Twelfth? Yes.
Alderwoman, you've been here now two years, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and were you consulted about leadership positions before today?
About whether I would seek...
No, 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 what, not about, just about if there was going to be a slate or leadership position or any such thing?
I think everyone who's interested talked to me about it before today.
So they had already talked to you about it, people were interested in it?
People who were interested spoke to me, yes.
So the Alderwoman from the Tenth had already talked to you about it?
We talked about the rules earlier last week.
And she was interested in a position?
I asked her if she was, because I hope she was.
Okay, because what I heard her say, she had talked to all the senior people, and then was only interested in it after she found out they weren't. So you're telling me that's something a little different?
I asked her the question during our conversation.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, I didn't say if you asked her or not. I just say that she says something different. Thank you. If the Alderman from, I don't know what... If the Alderman from the Fifth would yield?
The Alderman from the Fifth yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the Twelfth?
Sure, I'll yield, but no U-turns.
Thank you, Alderman. Were you consulted about a leadership role earlier?
Consulted, no. Someone asked me today if I was interested in doing, I said I've done it before, so sure.
So, but not before today?
No, not consulted, no, no.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. Alderwoman Vasquez, I'm sorry, I don't want to say, that's not the wrong, I got six, seven? Six, okay. Alder, if the Alderwoman from the Seventh would yield? Six, I'm, which, is it six or seven?
Six.
Six, okay. I'm sorry, it is going to take a minute.
Yes, I will yield.
Alderwoman from the Sixth, will you yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the Twelfth?
Yes.
Alderwoman, were you consulted early, and I know you're just here, so you weren't for leadership, but did someone talk to you about leadership positions before today?
No, I was consulted when we talked, getting to know the new rules, but never consulted about a leadership position.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Alderwoman from the Seventh?
Alderwoman from the Seventh, will you yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the Twelfth?
Yes.
Were you consulted before today about leadership positions?
No, I was, we did have a conversation. I think the President of the Board had meetings with all of us who responded about the rules, and they walked through all of the rules and just kind of showed us, hey, this is what we're thinking, you're going to be voting on this. And then today, I did clarify to let, you know, the Alderwoman from the Tenth Ward know that I would be, like, nominating her, but no.
So you said no, and then you went into another thing, so I'm trying to understand what your answer was.
Right, I'm trying to clarify the point of how conversation went. The President of the Board met with every Alder who responded to them about, and had a meeting.
Do you know, were you there when the President met with every Alder?
I said everyone who responded to them.
Were you there?
I mean, from today.
No, were you there when the President met with every Alder that responded?
No.
So then you can't testify. I am a lawyer, so I'm really kind of things about, so what you were, so you were told by the President that she met with...
I was told by everyone in this room as well, from all the conversations I had, everyone who you asked has said, yes, I've had conversations about the rules.
No, that is not my question. Can you let me finish?
Okay.
Thank you. My, so you just said that you, the President met with everyone who responded. And I asked you, were you there when the President met with everyone responded? You said no. So what I'm understanding is that the President told you she met with everyone that responded, is that correct?
And I'm saying, no. I've had conversations today, and I've heard in everyone's responses that we, that they had a chance to respond and see the rules.
Who is everyone?
Everyone who responded.
Who is everyone that responded? Because when you make those kind of pronouncements, you need to say who that is.
Everyone who I've had a conversation with today, Alderwoman from the First Ward, Alderwomen from the Second Ward, Alderwomen from the Third Ward, Alderwomen from the Fourth Ward, Alderwomen from the Fifth Ward, Alderwomen from the Sixth Ward, myself, Alderwomen, every, every person who I've had a chance to have a conversation with today has said, yes, I've heard about the rules, I got a chance to read through them, I had access to those, you know, I'm familiar with them. But you asked about leadership, and I'm saying in regards to leadership conversations, I let Alderwoman from the Tenth Ward know that I, hey, I want to nominate you today for a position.
So you let her know, she didn't ask you?
No, she did not ask.
Thank you very much. And I'm sorry, Ms. Brown. If the Alderman from the Ninth would yield?
The Alderman from the Ninth yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the Twelfth?
Yes.
Alderman, so did you have discussions prior to today about leadership in this Board?
I was invited to review the rules as part of our oriental, well, prior to our orientation, and it was part of the rules that we would be electing new members out of the body. And so I understood the process. Being ineligible to myself pursue leadership positions, I was, did not inquire further.
So are you familiar with Congress at all? With the body of, because many of our rules are based on Congress. Are you familiar with them?
Yes, I'm familiar with them.
Okay, and one of the things that happens in Congress is that you have a majority and a minority. Are you familiar with that leadership?
Yes.
Okay, so that is so everybody can be included, that you don't just have a non, that you don't have a dictatorship that tells one side what the other one has to do and what their leadership is. Isn't that what that pretty much is about? So if the Democrats are in minority, then they pick their own leaders, and the Republicans are in minority, they pick their own leaders, but you do have both sides of an issue. Is that correct? Is your understanding?
It is, but I don't see how this is germane to the discussion.
Oh, because it's, you don't have to see, because I do. It's germane to this issue, and I will tell you, it's because North St. Louis has always been treated differently. Millions of dollars have been funneled out of them, leadership has been funneled out of them. You asked me, and I'm answering, thank you. And so we want to be able to be in charge of our own, if we're the minority, which we are, because we only have three people, four people at the most from North St. Louis, we want to pick our own leadership, okay? And so what happens is the Democrats are not able to pick the Republicans' leadership, and the Republicans are not able to pick the Democrats' leadership. So in this case, people in North St. Louis, those of us who represent it, feel left out, and that we're being marginalized, and that this has been all put together, and there was not transparency, and that if we're going to be the minority party, we want to pick our own, because we are. We're first of all opposed to the way this is set up. And then second of all, then we come with something in which people said they talked to everybody, and then they really didn't, and people have been left out. So that's how it's pertinent, because you're supposed to have a fair representation across the city. We actually have a law in the city of St. Louis that talks about boards and commissions, and how they should be representative of everybody across the city. And I actually pushed for it with the charter reform.
Sorry, not to interrupt, but what's your question?
Oh, so you don't want to hear anymore about how it's pertinent, so have I told you enough?
I'd love to talk to you about that.
That was your question, you put that to me, so I just was answering it.
Yeah.
Okay, but I want to just finish. So I pushed to make sure that the people on the, North of Page was included, because for twenty-some odd years, we have been excluded from boards and commissions. So that's why it's pertinent, because when people have been included, that excluded, they need to be included and they need to be consulted. That's why it's pertinent. So my original question was, were you consulted? And you said with everybody with the meeting that you talked, that that's at the point that it was brought up, is that correct?
Yes, I can only speak to my own experience, and I can say that...
And that's all I'm asking.
We did discuss the structure of the rules and then structure of leadership.
And then were you consulted about who the leadership would be?
I was, but I knew there was a process for that.
You were consulted?
I'm not sure what you mean by consulted.
I mean, was there a slate presented to you, or did someone talk to you about who the people were going to be nominated?
No slate was presented.
No slate? Was the name Shane Cohen brought up?
In general, or...
As the person who would be the Vice Chair, or the Vice President?
Alderman Cohen expressed his interest to me.
Okay, and then was the name Shamie Clark-Hubbard brought up?
I don't recall.
You don't recall?
I don't think so.
Did she express an interest to you?
I don't think we've had a discussion directly.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I don't think we've had that discussion directly with each other.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it. You have, the Alderwoman from the Eleventh has made the point very well. It is not transparent, it is not truthful in what has been said here. There was no attempt to make sure that people from North St. Louis kept their seniority and was part of the process. There are very few of us, we lost so many people with this going to fourteen, and then it's like, I want to say, this is just like when a woman gets robbed, and the people say, oh, that woman got robbed, and then you come behind her and you divide the bounty of what the woman got robbed with. North St. Louis is reeling, and then for somebody else to decide who our leadership is, is just plain wrong.
Do you just want to state one thing for the record, that pursuant to Rule eighty-seven now, our rules of the Board of Aldermen, if they are silent, are based on Roberts' Rules of Order rather than the congressional rules? Alderwoman from the Eleventh?
Like to ask for the Alderwoman of the Sixth Ward to yield to questions?
The Alderwoman from the Sixth yield to questions from the Alderwoman from the Eleventh?
Yes.
Thank you and good morning, or good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
How long have you been an Alderman here?
About six hours.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you. And if the Alderman of the 10th Ward could yield to the similar question? I'm sorry, is that ninth? Okay, ninth.
The Alderman from the ninth yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the 11th?
And how long have you been an Alderman, sir?
Same amount as, uh, Alderwoman Vasquez.
My problem is that these people, these Aldermen, were part of a discussion. I've been here since August. Nobody said anything to me, and what is more disturbing is that in the cross-examination done by the Alderwoman of the 12th Ward, our President had these discussions. This is going to be a problem. How dare you? How dare any of you leave any of us? We just came off of the rotunda talking about unity. We just came off of the rotunda talking about working together. This is not working together. I have to be able to cast a vote, but nobody thought to consult me about what we were voting about. I take offense to that, and my, my community takes offense to that. I'm supposed to be a member of this board, of this 14. And for our leadership, to have not consulted is very appalling, and should be ashamed. I have nothing further.
Thank you. I do also want to thank the thirteen members of the Board of Aldermen who did meet to discuss the rules and provide input, and, um, there are email documentation from the, in your inbox about efforts that were made to meet with that fourteenth person. So, Alderwoman from the 10th? Nope, you are out of order. So, um, with that, it has been moved. Would you like to be recognized? Would you like to be recognized?
Madam President?
All right.
This was wrong, and it was a mistake on your part.
We won't go back and forth. Did, did we meet on the rules? Did you come in my office?
I met with you about that, but we didn't meet about this particular issue, and the conversations surrounding these nominations.
Okay.
Okay? So, I'm a straightforward person, I don't play games, I don't have time for this. My, my community doesn't have time for this. But if you asking for my vote, then you need to ask for my opinion.
Right. Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 10th?
Yes, I have just a few things again, because the public is watching, this is our first day, right? So, and there were some words that were just thrown around that I don't want to be misunderstood. And one in particular was slate, and everybody knows that I was, would never be for a slate down here, because I'm an independent thinker, an independent voter, and an independent server. And so with that being said, I want, I would always make sure that everybody had their say, from, again, their elected position. And I also say, I think consultation and meeting has been misconstrued in, in, in a gray area around here. Consultation about today, about me wanting to be the floor leader after I talked to the senior members, including Alderwoman Boyd and Alderman Oldenburg, who both said they weren't interested. I apologize again to Alderwoman Tyus for misunderstanding you earlier, what you said about not being interested in any of the leadership positions. I apologize for that, because that is how I understood what you said, and that's why I didn't come to you the way I came to the rest of them. Meetings, though, President Green's efforts to have us all meet around these rules, and I wasn't in a nefarious, sneaky, one-person meeting. The room was full in my meeting. Several Aldermen and her administration were there, and we talked through the rules, from the first rule to the second rule, and then the changes that were made, I think came out of conversations that Alderman and Ballmer had, that I had shared same, similar stances on about seniority, which is why the two-year position was add, two years of seniority was added to it, and I agree to that, and that's why we voted on the rules today. I wouldn't have had any of these conversations if we didn't get past voting for the rules, because if we didn't get past voting for the rules, we wouldn't be here. So that is why these conversations just started today, and Alderwoman Keys, I want you to know wholeheartedly that it was nothing nefarious, that I didn't come ask you, or didn't not come talk to you, but I'm just, I want you to know that, again, we are talking about moving and working forward together, so moving for, I hope that you understand that that is where this came from today. And I hope you also understand that Northside is in my heart. So, with that being said, I'm asking again, now I'm asking everybody. Uh, in sense, I'm, am I the only person on there, though?
Yes.
A roll call, a roll call for me to serve as, um, floor leader for this legislative session.
Any further discussion? It's been moved by the Aldermen from the, or Alderwoman from the seventh, seconded by the Alderman from the fourth, that, uh, we elect Alderwoman, uh, from the 10th as the floor leader. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer? Alderman Oldenburg? Alderman Cohen? Alderman Norrigan? Alderman Ballmer? Alderwoman Valesquez? Alderwoman Sonnay? Alderwoman Spencer? Alderman Browning? Alderwoman Clark Hubbard? Alderwoman Keys? Alderwoman Tyus? Alderwoman Boyd? Alderman Aldrich? President Green?
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg? Alderman Ballmer? Alderwoman Spencer? Alderwoman Boyd? Eleven aye votes and one no vote.
By your vote, you sustain the motion. Congratulations, floor leader from the 10th Ward. With that, I will take nominations for the Assistant Floor Leader. Uh, Alderman from the fourth, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, and I don't want to belabor this point. The Assistant Floor Leader is one of the positions that does not need the two years of seniority, and as we pointed out, the, the demographics of this board have been shifting. Uh, I, I have spoken with the Alderman from the 14th. Uh, he asked, uh, for me to nominate him earlier today, uh, on this, uh, this position. I told him I would do so, because I think it's important that we do have a, a black man in leadership, uh, here in the city. So I would, uh, move that we, uh, appoint, uh, the 14th Ward Alderman as the Assistant Floor Leader.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the fourth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the seventh, that we elect, uh, the representative from the 14th, um, as our Assistant Floor Leader. Is there, uh, any further discussion? Uh, Alderwoman from the 10th?
Alderwoman from the, I know the 11th Ward is not, I would like to nominate Alderwoman from the 11th Ward.
Alderwoman from the 10th has nominated the Alderwoman from the 11th for, um, Assistant Floor, yeah, Assistant Floor Leader. Is there any other, uh, is there a second on that as well? Is there a second on that nomination? Okay, we got a, we got a second, seconded by the Alderwoman from the eighth. All right, we, any other nominations for Assistant Floor Leader? Seeing none, what I will do is I will first, um, as Alderman from the 14th was nominated first, we will first take a roll call vote on, uh, his nomination, and then we will take, uh, should that fail, we will then take a second vote, um, on the nomination of the Alderwoman from the 11th. Yes. Sure. Is there any discussion on the nominations? Uh, Alderman from the fourth?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Again, just to kind of reiterate what I said previously, I think that, uh, you know, we have been having discussions both on the geography and demographics on the makeup of this board. I think, uh, you know, for me personally, I, I, I would like to, uh, ensure that there's good representation of all of the, uh, the citizenry of the City of St. Louis here. I think that the Alderman from the 14th also brings an interesting dynamic, having served, um, se- several terms as a state rep. I, I, I don't recall exactly how many, um, but I think that, uh, as, as we move from a board of twenty-eight to a board of fourteen, and we, uh, ostensibly focus more on legislation, I think it'll be interesting to see him bring some of his, uh, expertise from the State House, uh, to our body here, and, uh, yeah, thank you.
Any further discussion on the nominees? Uh, Alderwoman from the eighth?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Um, I rise right now with a heavy heart and just a, um, a sober look at where we are right now. Um, as I mentioned earlier, um, you know, I was, my heart was broken listening to the Alderwoman from the 11th, feeling left out of the process today. Um, and, um, I just, given where we have been as a board and what we have been through over the last year, two years, three years, eight years, however many years, um, I just think it's important that we, especially with this smaller board, include the voices of every single person that is here. When I was speaking earlier, I was reminding us all that we were elected, we are, we are down here, we are elected by our voters. The voters in each one of our districts trusted that we, each one of us individually would be able to represent their best interests, our collective best interests, and we cannot leave a single voice out of, of our deliberations and, and, and the work that we're here to do. With that being said, I would like to remove my votes from the previous two, and, um, I'm going to abstain from this vote today, feeling that I am not ready to make a vote on our leadership, uh, for the board. Thank you, Madam President, and my colleagues.
Uh, Alderwoman from the 12th?
Alderman from the fourth?
I, I will yield, yes.
Um, you just nominated the Alderman from the 14th, and you talked about his, uh, previous legislation experience. Can you tell me anything you know about his previous, was he your, uh, state rep?
He was not.
Okay, and?
I, I've, uh, been in a lot of the same rooms as him since even previous to his being elected. Um, we, we were, uh, both St. Louis Young Democrats together. Uh, I, I was familiar with his work with the Fight for 15.
The St. Louis Young Democrats, that is so diverse, is that the one you're talking about?
I'm sorry?
That diverse group of people called the St. Louis Young Democrats?
I think it's a fairly diverse body.
It's not diverse at all. Um, so, you talked about his previous legislation. Can you tell me what kind of legislation he's passed? Because I do follow him, and I know what his legislation has been.
Uh, I know that he, uh, passed some legislation in a, in a pretty, uh, in a house pretty opposed to, uh, to Democrats and to, uh, especially Democrats coming out of the City of St. Louis. I know that he was able to pass, uh, some limb, uh, limb loss awareness legislation, um, and, you know, I, I would defer to him on, on more specifics, but I know that that was, uh, an accomplishment in Jefferson City.
But he didn't get up and say that, you said it, so that's why I want your perspective of what he did, and he did do that. That's something that is very important to him, and I watched him when he do it, and it is important, and I, I cheered for him when he was doing that, because I'm, I have people in my family who have limb problems, so that was not a problem for me. But do you know of anything else that he did?
Um, I, I would have to defer to, uh, the Alderman from the, uh, from the 14th.
And I, I don't want to defer, because I'm just going by your words, and you know, I'm properly questioning you on what you said, which is, and what you said was about his, uh, his, his legislation.
Uh, just his legislative experience, having served in that body. Uh, I, I think that he brings experience from having served several terms in Jefferson City.
As a leader?
Uh, as, just a, as a member of, of that legislative body. I, I, I can't speak to whether he was a minority leader. Um, I, I know that he was a member of that legislative body.
So that's as much as you know that he passed limb awareness, and that he was a member of the body, is that correct?
Yes, for, for several terms.
And that's pretty much it?
Uh, yeah, and, you know, he asked me if I would nominate him. Uh, I, I thought that both based, uh, on, you know, geography and demographics, and, uh, the sake of under the new rules, getting some, uh, some newer folks into the...
Let me ask you a question. Are you, you're Indian-American, native?
Uh, yes.
Okay, um, and so, if you've got an organization for Indian-Americans, do you want me to pick who the Indian-American leaders are?
Uh, you know, it, it's, it's, well, I'm not going to let you put it into...
That's a yes or no question.
Then I, uh, am not yielding.
I know you wouldn't. You, you don't have to yield, but it's still that my question remains. Would you, because I know as a woman, if I have a women's group, I don't want men to come in and tell me who are supposed to be the leaders of a women's group.
Uh, I understand that, but I think that in a legislative body like this...
You said you're not yielding, so you're not allowed to talk anymore. Fair enough. Get it out. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Um, if the Alderwoman from the 11th would yield?
The Alderwoman from the 11th yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the 12th?
Alderwoman, um, could you tell me a little bit about your experience, um, as far as being investigator, and what you've done over your lifetime?
Let's, let us begin at the beginning, begin to begin. I've been a child abuse investigator for the State of Missouri, a tracker for juvenile offenders for the State of Missouri, a case manager for federal and state parolees for the Illinois Department of Corrections, a com- uh, a, uh, committee woman, uh, for the Democratic Central Committee for almost fifteen years. Additionally, I was an investigator through Key Point Government Solutions, uh, with, under the department, the Defense Counterintelligence and Security Agency. Um, in addition to that, I'm a former business owner, thirteen years, the largest number of biometric fingerprinting sites, transmitting data certified by the FBI and the Missouri State Highway Patrol.
Alderwoman, do you live north of Page?
Yes, I do.
In North St. Louis proudly?
Athlon Avenue.
Proudly.
Thirty-four years.
I understand that. Um, so we've already had some people nominated for positions, none of them live north of Page. Um, the President, already is the President, she doesn't live north of Page, doesn't live north of Delmar, neither does, um, Alderman from, Alderman Cohen doesn't live north of Page, or north of Delmar. Um, Alderwoman, um, from the 10th, I know where she lives, I won't say, but she doesn't live north of Page. So again, um, when I see, hear your nomination, that makes my heart at least jump a little bit, because we are being left out, and I know what this is like, a last minute to say, oh, okay, we're going to do that. Um, we're going to add somebody, but, um, I still heard you when you said you weren't consulted. But, let me tell you, I am going to support you, even though I don't like this process, because I will take somebody north of Page included in the process, if you are accepting the nomination, that's what I want to know.
I accept the nomination, but let me follow that up with, I do not expect that I will win the position, because I feel like now, this is clickish, and it feels like clickish behavior.
And that we've been...
When I could not, I don't understand, on this board, a second was called for, and there was silence. I heard crickets. I'm not an enemy to anyone in this room, but I'm going to tell you the truth, just like it is. And like I said, I don't play.
Alderwoman, I want to tell you...
And we need more people who come in here who don't play.
Alderwoman, I want to tell you, I didn't do a second, because I wanted to see, you know you could have had a second.
Oh, yeah.
I wanted to see if there would be a second, because that goes to what we've already talked, what you've said on this floor about exclusion, and about there's being a group of people that already decided, and that there are white people who think that if we just put things in place, and people of other who say, if we pick your black face, then that's your leader. And so that's what's been going on with North St. Louis, and it's been going on for a long time. Um, I've been writing letters to the mayor when she left people out of committees and things, uh, uh, boards and commissions, and they didn't include it, and that is what is going on at this board today. Is that how you feel, that we're being left out?
Absolutely.
So that's why I didn't say, I wanted to just see if anybody would do a second. I want to give the Alderwoman from eighth credit for, um, I'm sorry, because now I've made you the twentieth, okay? For years, I didn't want you to have the twentieth, and now you are the twentieth. Uh, I want to give the Alderwoman from the eighth credit for giving us a second.
Thank you.
And, um, there are some other people that know what's going on, they want to deny it, so sometimes, even when you lose the battle...
Oh, absolutely.
People who watch this know that we're not lying, and that is what has happened, and that's why when you talk all that talk about inclusion, I've had people for years come before my committees and talk about, I believe in inclusion, but they bring seven white men. And when I ask them that, they say, oh, yeah, we believe in inclusion, then I say, why do you have seven white men here? And it has culminated, at one point, with a black man coming back and... And it has culminated at one point with a black man coming back and saying, I got appointed to a job, I was given a job because you raised so much heck about inclusion. I've been doing that for 30 years. And I know when I'm being excluded, and I know when there's a setup being done, and to try to show me what you can do with power. But that's exactly the dictatorship kind of thing, an underhanded thing, and the leaving out of people that makes people distrust government. And you can't say all these wonderful things and then show that people, and let people be led out, left out of the process. And so I'm sorry that you were, I'm sorry that I was. I'm sorry that all of a sudden the Alderwoman from the 10th couldn't understand that I didn't say what she said. But then she beat it over there to nominate you. And I feel some kind of way about that also. But I am still going to support you because we need somebody that has got a mature perspective and that is from North St. Louis. And we don't need other people to pick our leaders for us.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the 14th.
Thank you, Madam Chair, or Madam President and members of the board. First, I want to thank the Alderman from the 4th Ward for nominating me. I did ask him today if he would nominate me. I come from a body, I know a lot of what he mentioned, and he mentioned my experience. And as things are being recorded, I do want to talk on that. Just because I'm young does not mean that I'm not experienced. The people have been believing in me. Before I was elected, I served on the Ferguson Commission, was one of the youngest members to serve on the Ferguson Commission that was picked by the governor to come up with recommendations of how we fix policing, housing, economics, and distressed communities. I grew up at Carr Square. I live north of Delmar. I lived north of Delmar my whole life, even when we moved to the West Side. We was right down the street from Shamie, my father, of Maple. But I grew up in North St. Louis. Nobody didn't pick me to run for committee man. Nobody picked me to run for state rep. I picked myself, and the people of the ward picked me. Since I've been committee man for the last several years, and I had to resign today, like I say, I came in very unpopular because I came in thinking about the people. I came in and I got elected as the youngest African-American committee man. When I look at this potential leadership board, I know yesterday we talked and say, it's a shame that we do not have black men. I would be the only black man, not just now in this body, but will also be on that leadership board. Since I've been state representative, I've passed over four pieces of legislation, two as a freshman, in a super minority chamber, and a representative from North Side where they already don't care too much about black men or women. I served on the highest committee in the state of Missouri on budget for the last three years. In the last two years, I brought back $18 million to my district and to my community. We all was duly elected. And I respect everyone who's been here before me. And I also believe the ones that just got here that want to step up and be part of change. And want to be part of a leadership body. Yes, I have not been at this board, but I've been elected since 2016. I've been serving my people since 2016. And I've been the state representative of the wonderful 78th District as of just yesterday at 11:59 for the last four years. So I appreciate the Alderman from the 4th Ward saying we do need to bring a different experience or a different person to the leadership board. The reality is, we have, what, 14 wards? We have four new members, roughly five. Alderwoman Keys was elected five months ago, roughly whatever time. Eventually, this board, we are going to get more and better, higher caliber people. At some point, this board is going to be majority new folks that haven't been here for two years. And as I talk about mentor and mentoring the next generation and the next alder, again, I appreciate you, Alderman Brett and Ryan. And I strategically asked you, as another male of color, and it's not many down here. And again, I do live north of Delmar and north of Page, and have been my whole life. And I'm honored and thankful that you decided to nominate me. And I would ask the board of Alderman, I think you do have two excellent folks. But if we want to talk about diversity, and we talked so much yesterday about we won't have no black men in this leadership position, there will be no black man. I come with a perspective like we all do, and I come from a perspective as a black man. As much as a label as you want to put, whatever, I wake up as a black man, I take my prosthetic off and fall asleep as a black man. Thank you, Alderman of the 4th Ward. And I would ask the body humbly for your support.
Alderwoman from the 12th.
Madam President, members of the board, the Alderman from the 14th has said something that is quite, not quite true. When he became a state rep, he had to be nominated by a committee. So some people did pick him. He had to go to committee people, and he had to ask them for their support. And he will remember, and he knows this is the truth, is that he could not get enough people to nominate him. And so he did not, I won't say the person's name, he could not get a particular person. So he accosted me on the parking lot of the board and said, oh, T.T. He calls me T.T., and in fact, if you want to see it, I can show you. "T.T., I can't get enough votes to be nominated." And it was another young black man that was also running. He said, "I can't get this person to be with me." And I talked to him, we talked about some things, and I said, I told him then, "Don't embarrass me." I picked up the phone, and the person that he could not get, I picked it up and got it for him. So when he says what he just did by himself, I often am very surprised that young people who don't know and forget who the shoulders they stand on. I can tell you about other people. I can tell you about Lucinda Frazier, who helped him, the parent of Alderman Bosley. I can tell you about other people in the black community who have always been helping him. When he was out marching in front of the jails, my husband and I brought money down to he and then state representative, I wanted to say, was it Bruce Franks, or maybe he wasn't a state representative then, and donated money for when they were going to get arrested. So don't act like that you don't stand on the shoulders of people or conveniently forget because you did not have the votes to become the state rep. So that is not true when you say nobody did something for you because people did do things for you. And so nobody says you're not a black man, says that in North St. Louis, why don't we get to pick somebody who we want? Why is it that all the people who are supporting you are not from North St. Louis? And why aren't they doing it? And I can tell you, and you know why, because there is a trail of blood in North St. Louis from this young man. And we all know it. And so you all think it's okay. But just like now, he said, the people didn't help him. I could pick up the phone and let you talk to the person who I called to get him that support. So please don't underestimate people who've been here for a while. I just heard him say, oh, this board is going to get better and more qualified. And more, he didn't use the word qualified, better as new people come in. That doesn't, new people don't make the board better. And I'm sure the people that's been here don't think that. So that is insulting to those of us who have prepared and worked. He talks about getting elected four, six years, four years ago. I got elected in 1991. I got gerrymandered in 2001 and left in 2003. I came back here and worked myself back up the ladder. So I don't disrespect his four years. I just know when he talks about a couple of million dollars, I could talk about $56 million in black wards that came in the form of grocery stores and Walgreens and all that kind of thing. So to dismiss, again, that's dismissive. That says, I'm here, and everybody else that's done something hasn't done anything at all, and that is just incorrect. So we already, the Alderwoman from the 11th, you already said you know what's going to happen. But as I said before, I'm still going to vote for you because I live in North St. Louis. And I want to vote for somebody who I chose in North St. Louis, not this whole group. And that's what happens with redistricting and how you dilute the black strength is that you marginalize them. And you can read all kinds of case laws, this is exactly, you can go and read. This is what they do. You can read it all over. This is, they make the wards bigger, they start changing how things are done. That is to marginalize black people so that black people don't have a voice. We already didn't have a voice, and as soon as we get to where we have a voice, the rules change. So he asked the Alderman from the 4th to nominate him, the 14th, but he didn't talk to us and ask to be nominated. And I wonder why that is. I wonder why that is. Again, because there was a slate came in here because there was a whole thing talked about flipping the board. But they couldn't flip the board for you or me or the Alderwoman from the 13th. And instead of listening to a great majority of North St. Louis that says, that's not okay with us, they're just going to marginalize them and act like that the people who represent them don't exist. And they can talk about it not happening. And every week, I'm going to come in here and bring a case law to talk about exactly that it happens just like this. But you will be getting my vote. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 7th.
Because I know that the public is watching and people are at home, I just, and to all of my colleagues, I have a very sick feeling in the pit of my stomach. Like, I don't feel good at all. I, you know, this conversation is getting, you know, so far left. You know, I know we're not supposed to address people directly, so I'm trying to keep it as, you know, clear as I can. But what I do want to say is, for me, I understand that there is no part of St. Louis where one area thrives and another area is failing. Even when I was knocking doors in the 7th Ward, I had people talking to me about how concerned they were about the North Side, about wanting development. But I also want us to make sure we're having very honest conversations because if we're going to talk about black people, black people do live on the South Side of St. Louis. The 7th Ward that I have the pleasure of representing is over 50% black. So if we are talking about black people and where black people are, I just want to make sure that I lift this up in that conversation out of respect for the people who voted for me, that black people are on the North Side, yes. There's been intentional disinvestment, absolutely. But black people are also on the South Side of, you know, the South Side as well. And I also just want to say that, you know, the decorum and the ways in which we speak to each other, because I keep hearing this language of a black face or a brown face being put up by white people. It's not being said with a name, but that is extremely offensive to anyone in this room that identifies as whatever they identify, but especially black. You know, so that, to me, is very disrespectful, and I would not say that to another person in this room.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderwoman from the 13th.
I think the newer alderpeople, I think they didn't hear what Clerk Kennedy said. If you don't know the history, you can't speak on the future. And so what Alderwoman Sonnier is speaking on is the future. What Alderwoman Tyus is speaking on is the history. St. Louis City has been divided for over 50 years. And I'm not going to tell my age, but I'm older than that. So it's been divided longer than that. So let's just be real about what's going on. Yeah, it is African-Americans that live in South St. Louis. But again, we keep forgetting the African-Americans that lived in North, that moved in North St. Louis, invested 60, 70 years in North St. Louis, and saw the demise of North St. Louis. And so I don't think people are listening to Alderwoman Tyus because it's not about the current administration. It's about the administration prior to this administration, the administration prior to that administration that had destroyed North St. Louis. And so let's just be real transparent here since we want to be so open about what's going on. It's about the destruction of North St. Louis that has been done for over 50 years. And so telling me people in South St. Louis live over, black people live in South St. Louis, that's irrelevant to me because, as I said when I first got elected, when I was told as the chair of the Black Caucus, you have to wait your turn, I said, I've been waiting for 20 years. I don't want to wait no more. I want what's due to us. In South St. Louis, you have development. In South St. Louis, you have new buildings coming up. You have people moving over there. You have mixed housing. You have all of this. In North St. Louis, we have zero. It is nothing in our community. No grocery stores, the only glass grocery store is what Alderwoman Tyus put, the Schnucks. That's the only store that we have. My residents rely on the convenience stores to go to the store. So don't tell me about what's in South St. Louis because you're the new kid on the block and you don't know the history that we have had to see the destruction. We were in a streets meeting, and Randy, God love him, he said, "We started having problems with trash when the pandemic came." I said, "Don't do that." We've been having problems with trash before the pandemic. The pandemic exposed the dysfunction of North St. Louis from COVID to tuberculosis, to losses, to cancer. All of this hit us, and we always had the unlevel of medical care. We had the unlevel of services. So the pandemic exposed the dysfunction that was given to North St. Louis for all these years. And we saw it crumbling down, and nobody saw the urgency of it. And so we still don't get the urgency. We still don't get the medical treatment. We still don't get our trash picked up. We still have the heavy dumping. So don't do that. Don't speak on things you have no knowledge of. So the history and the seniority on this board is what is needed to keep bringing back to your attention. We are constantly being neglected. So don't do that. Don't speak on things that your people progressives had told you two years ago. I'm talking 20 years ago. Wake up, people. Go to North St. Louis and compare what's in South St. Louis, and you'll still see the divide. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion?
Yes.
Alderwoman from the 12th.
I want to go behind the Alderwoman from the 13th to amen, amen, amen because the Alderwoman from the 7th, I guess it is, speaks as though I don't know about South St. Louis. She doesn't even have knowledge that I lived in South St. Louis. I lived in the central quarter, and I've been in North St. Louis. I lived in the central quarter for the first couple of years that I lived here. I then moved to South St. Louis while I went to law school and lived there for seven, eight years, and then I moved to North St. Louis. When I got to North St. Louis, I was appalled because I was so used to all the services I had in South St. Louis. I had a Schnucks, I had a Nationals, I had a Shop and Save, I had a Famous Bar. I had all these things that I got to North St. Louis. And I live in a black, middle-class community, and they didn't have these things. And I said, how, what is going on here? Why doesn't this exist? So I know black people live in South St. Louis. I was living in South St. Louis before you was born. So I know that. And when I lived in South St. Louis, most of the people wouldn't speak to me. In fact, the mayor and her family moved to South St. Louis, and we shared an alley in the 80s. I moved to North St. Louis in 1986, but the mayor's father had been beaten by Jimmy Matthews for the 27th Ward Alderman. And then he became the assessor. And the mayor, when she was a little girl, moved to, why she tells that story, growing up in North St. Louis, when she was 10 or 11, 12 years old, she moved to Shenandoah with her mother and father where we shared the same alley.
Alderwoman, if you could please keep your remarks germane to the nominations we have before us.
Well, I'm just addressing what she said, like, we don't know black people live in North St. Louis. And I want her to know how extensively I know that black people live in South St. Louis. But we, they don't have the lack of services and the lack of grocery stores, although it's growing more and more and more, that there are lacks that I don't like, lacks of things that I don't like. But to act like, and I heard somebody said earlier, we just got to go forward. That is what people say when they don't want to address the sins of what has happened. That's what people say when they talk about, let through their mouths, about reparations, but we got something that needs reparations right here, and then they don't do it. She don't even have the knowledge to know how much block... She don't even have the knowledge to know how much block grant money. Because when you came here, Madam President, I told you about these things then. I have been one of the fights, the people that fought tiffs and tax abatements with my own political life. So when you get up and speak, sometimes you need to say, there's a reason for people who've been here before because they know so much more than me about the history. The clerk spoke to this history, he spoke to that we were the Board of Aldermen and what that meant. But what he didn't say is how hard Sharon Tyus fought so we wouldn't be the Board of Aldermen and that she fought for alderwomen to be at the board. So when I find a young alderwoman getting up and dismissing the history of North St. Louis and comparing them to say, well, it's black people that live in South St. Louis and it's white people that live in North St. Louis, and so what? That is not the point. When you don't know what you're talking about and you don't have the history, it is better not to repeat the verbiage that people told. Now, if you say, I want to learn about that, I want to learn how you did $52 million worth of stuff and they still tore up your ward. Because that's what people do, and I'm talking about white people, when they came from the state and they came to the ward that I had built up, they said, well, what happened? How did this happen? I said, I built it. They said, well, why did you stop? I said, because in 2001, we had a racist redistricting to tear up my ward. And it is still tore up. And so when you say that, I say, well, we live there too. So you haven't gone through what the people in North St. Louis have. So you might live there, and there might be black people, but you haven't gone through the years of withdrawal of services and lack of services, lack of money, grass not being cut, buildings not being demolished, no development except for what you have to fight for with all of your life. And then you have young black people come down here and live in South St. Louis and tell us as though that's the equal thing that happened. And I always say, again, that's when you talk about homophobia. And then white men say, but what about heterosexual phobia? It's not the same thing at all. It is not the same. And if you don't know that, you should listen and find out. You just heard the clerk, go and talk to him. He and I served for 30-some years together. He can tell you about all the fights that I had to do and the things we had to do, like stop development in South St. Louis and not let them build a Walgreens so that they could build one at Natural Bridge and Kings Highway. You don't know any of that history, so don't speak to it because it makes a big difference. It makes a great big difference. So when you want to act just dismiss because somebody, one of your progressive partnerships have told you that, that's why I say about black faces, they want you to ape what they said, and they want to be able to hide behind that there are white people saying this to you so that then they can say, see, a black person said it. I am used to that all of my life. I've been used to that when people would come to me and tell me, you are a different kind of black. I'm used to that when I first got to this Board of Aldermen before there was a black mayor of any kind. And they said to me, well, you and your husband have all the right degrees and you all could be, you could be the first black mayor if you would just stop talking about black. As if I could stop talking about black or being a woman. And I also took heat when I supported gay issues at a time when it was not fashionable to support gay issues. I've been doing this all my life, fighting for equality. What I do not fight for and I do not accept is that when you, the rules get changed. And the rules have gotten changed for a reason, and you can't hide behind them. And we're going to keep talking about them. They're not going to be something that's quiet. It's something that the president wants to do, and I know I've heard from the now vice president for years, and it does not make it okay. We're not the same. And black people living, if I move to the 16th Ward and I say, well, I live there, well, it's not the 16th Ward, whatever it is now, that is not the same condition of total withdrawal from a community instilling. And then people come in and tell you they're going to fix it up and do the community a different way. But they're not going to have the people who, the people elected be part of the process. That is wrong. We are part of the process. We got elected, and that's why they have alderpeople. So when you then try to run from the issue and try to act like, oh, that's all right, long as we have black people, it's the same. It is not. This is wrong on more than one level. And talking about one black man here, that was the reason why there's one black man here, because the president and the mayor went after a lot of the other black men and put them all in the same wards with other people. And this is all the stuff that we talked about, what was going to happen. We didn't have to have a crystal ball, we knew that was going to happen, and so that has happened. And so we got one, so now you say, I'm the only one I have to represent. How about we have a diversity of black men, gay, straight, whatever? How about we have a diversity of people? We have more representation percentage for Hispanic and Asian than for black people now. More representation in North St. Louis, none. None. That is wrong. I'm going to fight it to the day I die, and I don't care if they bring, again, brown faces. I don't care. I do not care. You can be a brown face, but if you're talking against North St. Louis, you are not talking about something that you know. Have you ever lived in North St. Louis? And if you have, why do you live in South St. Louis now? Because I moved from South St. Louis and went to North St. Louis so that I could build it up. And I did all the things. I have my original piece of literature talking about I'm going to build a grocery store and brought Schnucks at a time when there was no Schnucks in North St. Louis. I'm going to build a Walgreens, got that. I built the first new school in 30 years. I filled the first bank. I built a credit union. I did all this stuff. And then you're like, poo-pooing it like, so what? We don't have these things. In North St. Louis, people tell me that they have to drive to my ward to get business done. That's ridiculous. And that is ridiculous for you, a young black woman, to dismiss that as if it's the equal to what you've gone through.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All right, seeing none. Yeah, I misspoke earlier on how the voting will be conducted. Per...
The clerk will call their names in a simple language.
So the clerk will call each person's, ward will call the roll, and in that roll, you need to state which person you are voting for. So either Aldrich or Keys, when your name is called, in order to abide by Roberts rules. All right, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Then, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Aldenberg. Alderman Con. Alderman Orion. Alderman Ballmer. Alderwoman Velasquez. Alderwoman Sonnier. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderman Aldrich. President Green.
Aldrich.
Alderman Aldenberg. Alderman Ballmer. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Tyus. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Thank you. That is eight for Aldrich, three for Keys, and two abstain.
Want to congratulate the alderman from the 14th on being elected the Assistant Floor Leader for the board. That concludes our miscellaneous and unfinished business announcements.
We have none.
I will just say that pursuant to our rules, the Leadership Committee will be putting out an email, but they will take nominations for committee chairs for the next seven days. So be looking for that in your email inbox and be sure to respond if you are interested in chairing a committee or you would like to nominate somebody to chair a committee. Further announcements, Alderwoman from the 12th.
We may not be for announcements, so I have an inquiry, so when we get to that miscellaneous, that's what I want to do.
We've already finished miscellaneous, that's what elections were under. We moved on to announcements.
Okay, well, okay, well, I have a query about, do we have an ethics committee? And if so, are we going to meet? And if so, are we going to respond to the fact that your staff member is, lives with one of our aldermen? Because I think that is a conflict of interest or the appearance of impropriety. We need to address that because that is very improper.
Your issue is noted. Alderwoman from the 10th, our Assistant Floor Leader.
Are we on announcements?
Or, we are on announcements, yes.
Okay, thank you. I promise, I'm not going to get up into this habit again of going back and forth with announcements. But what I will say is, I want to announce my first 10th Ward meeting. So in addition to my constituents always having my personal cell phone number, me showing up at ward meetings, at neighborhood meetings, at block meetings, at the meeting that's held by our 26th, former 26th Ward Committee Woman, State Senator Carla May. Every month, I have also always avail myself the last Monday of the month for what we call a one-on-one meeting, where myself and leadership and staff make ourselves available to talk to constituents. So for this month, our first 10th Ward one-on-one meeting will be at Grace Church off of Waterman and Skinker, and it'll be at 6:30. I'll definitely send out the flyer and post, but I just wanted to make that public announcement. And I also wanted to announce that our former colleague, Annie Rice, I don't see her in the building anymore, but, you know, we passed that historic charter reform legislation. And I want to make sure, did you know that that is open, right? The applications are open. So if you would like to apply to be on that city charter commission, the application deadline is until Tuesday, June 6th, but please connect with your alderperson or your alderperson's secretary and get the proper information to do that. Thank you.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the 1st.
Thank you so much. I would like to announce that I will be having office hours for the new 1st Ward this Wednesday, tomorrow, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Holly Hills Community Garden. I hope to see anyone who's interested in talking about the 1st Ward there. I'd also like to announce that we will have a cleanup. The Friends of Crandylet Park are hosting a cleanup on Saturday at 9:00 a.m. from the boathouse as Earth Day is this coming Saturday in the city of St. Louis. I hope everyone finds some sort of Earth Day event to attend. It will be again at 9:00 a.m. in Crandylet Park for a cleanup starting at the boathouse. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? One further announcement. The clerk is asking that members please stay for selection of offices and staff after this that will be conducted by the clerk. It should go quickly. I know, we're all tired. He's already working on it. So any further announcements? Seeing none, Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. All 14 alderpersons were present today.
Alderwoman from the 10th, you are now recognized on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I make the motion to adjourn until Friday, April 28, 2023, 10:00 a.m. in the chambers.
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderman from the 3rd, that we adjourn until Friday, April 28 at 10:00 a.m. in the chambers. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much.